All right. We will. Welcome, welcome. Prior to beginning, I'd like to refer anybody who needs translator services to Ms. Sylvia Montur at the podium. Do we have Sylvia here? Oh, she's in the back. We'll have her come up here in just a second. Sorry.
Buenas tardes. My name is Sylvia. And if you need services of an interpreter, please call 1-805-324-7680. And enter the code of access 762-960-391. Followed by the number. This number is totally free. Again, you can call 1-805-324-7680. And enter the code of access 762-960-391. Followed by the number. You can also access these instructions on our website. At MCS4KIDS.com. Directing to the lower part of the page in Quick Links. The quick links and clicking on the agenda of the board meeting. To go to the agenda of this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Montur. One, welcome to the Modesto City Schools regular board meeting of June 23, 2025. 1,526th regular board meeting. There was no closed session this evening. Therefore, there's nothing to report out. And this meeting is now called order. So again, there was no closed session, so there's nothing to report out today. Let's start with roll call. Trustee Brown.
Present.
Trustee Daly.
Present.
Trustee Irvin.
Present.
Trustee Lopez.
Present.
Trustee Marks.
Present.
Vice President Mejia.
Present.
And President Miasis, I am present. Okay, all members are present, so we can move forward. Please join me in standing for a moment of silence. And then remain standing for the pledge of allegiance immediately following. Thank you. Join in the pledge of allegiance. Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Good evening. This open session meeting of the Board of Trustees is being livestreamed at the direction of the board. The livestream is available on the district's website. And the recordings will be available for viewing the day after the board meeting. We recognize that we have a lot of people today interested in tonight's board meeting. Thank you all for coming out this evening. We do have those in our overflow rooms. So those viewing this meeting from our overflow room, as room becomes available, will notify and accommodate you as necessary. Thank you again for your patience this evening. MCS has provided an opportunity for public provided comments. It is outlined on the agenda. The public has been given an opportunity to call in and leave a voicemail, send us a comment via email, or appear in person before the board. Any public comments received via email or voicemail following the posting of the board agenda and prior to noon, the day of the board meeting will not be read aloud, but have been transcribed and printed with copies provided to each board member prior to the start of the meeting and are available to the public. The voice and email public comments will be attached to a future board meeting minutes for approval. This practice will continue until further notice. For members of the public that are interested in commenting in the future, we welcome your comments. If you wish to address the board during period for public comment on a subject not on the agenda, you must complete a public presentation request card and submit it to the board president prior to the period for public comment. If you need assistance from our translator, please indicate that on the request card. Every person who wishes to address the board, please fill out a card. You will find the cards in the lobby. And you can hand your comment card to Ms. Chambers in the back. She's right there. Thank you, Ms. Chambers. I also do want to remind you that if you wish to make a complaint against a specific district employee, you should follow the district's personnel complaint procedure. Copies of the procedure are available in the lobby as our agenda copies which outline the procedures we will observe during the period for public comment. The right to address the board does not exempt the speaker from any potential liability for defamation. If you plan to speak on a topic, please fill out a card now. Again, on a topic that's not on the agenda, please fill out a card now. No cards will be accepted after the period for public comment has begun. The maximum time for anyone's speaker during this time is three minutes for a total of 30 minutes. For those of you requesting translation services, an additional minute will be added to your time. In the event we have more speakers than the 30-minute allotment allows, we may decide to shorten the individual speaker time limit or extend the total amount of time for public comment to accommodate more speakers. This will be decided upon the number of speakers and how much time we have for our meeting. Okay, I'd like to turn it over to our superintendent for welcome.
Perfect. Thank you, President Miasis. First off, welcome everyone here that's in the room and also over in the overflow. I hear there's 65 people over in the overflow room. So I appreciate everyone's willingness to come out and voice your questions, your comments, your concerns, and giving us your feedback and input. It is important to the process, so thank you. I'm going to keep mine really short and I'm going to really provide some voice to a presentation that you're going to see here in just a minute. I want to thank the communications department for putting together the video that we all will see here shortly. Very excited about the content and very proud of our students. So with that, welcome, and I'll turn it back over to you, President Miasis.
All right. Thank you so much. We'll go straight to Ms. Jerika Kena-Schams to watch this video.
Good evening, President Miasis, Board Trustees, and Superintendent Dr. Naguchi, and our families and staff who are here tonight with us as well. So the school year has ended, and thank goodness for that. But before we embark on another academic year, we want to take just a couple of minutes to recognize the many achievements of our students. And as Dr. Naguchi said, they are impressive and inspiring. And we want to show them to you tonight in a video so that you can hear in the students' own words what they achieved and what it meant to them. The video speaks for itself, so let's roll tape.
Stanislaus County Academic Panatholon.
I won. I placed in every category. And then I also got speeches and first place for Scholastic and first place for my team. So it was really exciting.
Hanshaw Middle School. Smash Brothers champs Central California eSports tournament Stockton competition.
Downey High School. First place in All-American High School Film Festival in New York City.
It was pretty cool seeing that my whole team, or the whole team as a family, worked together to make something very good.
It felt really awesome to know that I myself really contributed to the win.
Future Business Leaders of America. Multiple state and regional county wins.
Through FPLA and the Employment Opportunities Class Pathway, I was able to secure a $2,500 opportunity and a six-month mentorship for my business startup. And I was also able to make it to state for impromptu speaking, which greatly improved my public speaking abilities.
Modesto High School. Stanislaus County 2025-2026 poet laureate.
When I was selected to be the youth poet laureate of Stanislaus County, I was ecstatic and overfilled with joy. I remember telling my mom that I'm the poet laureate, and I just remember hugging her so tight because I was so happy.
State Honor Choir participants.
Just the feeling of being accepted, I mean, I can't even really explain how it is. I was just, I was so happy.
Surprised when I got into regionals. So when I heard that I got into state, I was even more surprised. So it was a big shock to me.
Stanislaus County Academic Panatholon third-place winners.
And I was really proud of our team this year for being so successful.
It was a really fun experience and we were able to do it together, so that just made it so much better.
U.S. Congressional Gallery Art Exhibit Featured Artist.
My name is Andrea Valencia Cepeda. I am a senior here. And this is my painting, that one that is going to be hung up in the Capitol.
Gregory High School. Stanislaus County Mock Trial Winners.
It feels amazing.
It feels pretty good, especially because last year we made it to the championship round, but we ended up losing.
Byer High School. Iron Patriots Robotics First Impact Award Sacramento Regional Competition.
Everyone was freaking out. People were jumping, screaming, some were crying.
Overall, it felt amazing, seeing all our hard work go to, go to be appreciated at one of these regionals was just pretty amazing to see.
Johansson High School. First, second, and third place at the Student Television Network Competition in Tampa, Florida.
How did I feel after I got second place in Tell the Story? I felt amazing.
inaugural $10,000 scholarship winner Youth for the Quality Care for Animals. Enoch's High School. 2025 Eddie's Superintendents Award.
So thank you to the students for telling us their stories. And thank you to the tireless work of our teachers and staff and parents who are behind it all. Thanks, President Miasis.
Thank you. And not that I had any influence over that at all, I swear, but there are two of my kids' best friends in that clip, which was kind of cool to see. I got to show that to them whenever it's, it'll be public. I'll replay it and then I'll show it to them when I get home tonight. They'll get a kick out of that. All right, so that'll move us on to the Approval of Consent Agenda. Are there any comments from the public regarding consent agenda items? Okay. Any from the board? Trustee Brown?
Yes, item 13, I'll need to step down.
Okay, so we will vote on item 13 separately. Any others? Trustee Lopez, did you have? All right. And, oh, 18, okay. All right, so we'll vote on those separately. So can, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda without 13 and 18?
I move.
Okay. Motion by Trustee Marks, second by Vice President Mejia. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes unanimously. We will move on to F13 on the consent.
I just want to state for the public that I serve on the Board of Directors for the Boys and Girls Clubs of Stanislaus County, and this is their contract that they are entering with Modesto City School. So I will abstain from this vote.
We'll see you back here in a few seconds. Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve number F13 on the consent agenda. Move approval by Trustee Daly, second by Vice President Mejia. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes you, passes 6-0, one abstention. Which will be Trustee Brown. Thank you, Trustee Brown. We'll go on to F18.
And I just have to make a notion that this is an approval for service agreement between Parent Institute for Quality Education. Their local branch here in Modesto. I work for Parent Institute for Quality Education at the statewide level. So that's why I'm recusing myself.
All right, thank you. All right, do I hear a motion to approve F18? Move approval by Vice President Mejia, second by Trustee Brown. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes 6-0 with one abstention being Trustee Lopez. Okay. Take care of that. Move on to the Order of Discussion and Action Items. Do I hear a motion to approve the Order of Discussion and Action Items? Move, motion by Trustee Marks. Do I hear a second? Second by Vice President Mejia. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes unanimously. That'll move us to item B1, which is the Approval for Fifth Grade Health Curriculum Adoption for 25-26. And the speaker will be Mike Rich.
Thank you, President. Mike Rich, Associate Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Professional Development, I'll be presenting today. As always, our work and all we do is grounded in the MCS vision of how are we preparing kids for what comes next? How are they helping to help them thrive and contribute to society? Also, we ground all of our work in our strategic goals linked to our LCAP. So this is, pertains to goal one in regards to student achievement and equitable access to helping them be college and career-ready. The purpose of the presentation tonight is to review the Fifth Grade Health Committee Purpose and Timeline, and then also to address some questions that came up at the June 9 meeting. So we'll address a few of those and then make the ultimate recommendation. So the committee, the purpose of the committee that met was to identify topics for fifth-grade health curriculum, as well as make a recommendation to the superintendent for what they would like to see taught in the classroom. One of the, or the five times that they met are there on the screen. They met over the last couple of months. One of the items that they reviewed is the California Healthy Youth Act. There's a question later on in the presentation regards to the process of how that came about. But in October of 2015, Governor Jerry Brown signed the California Healthy Youth Act into law. And it regulates several items that need to be taught specifically. And we'll see those here in a second in, when having, excuse me, when addressing or giving instruction in health and HIV prevention. The committee reviewed the California Healthy Youth Act as well as agreed upon some topics that they would like to see in this. You can see here this table. This is the same table we saw on June 9. On the right-hand side are the, I apologize. When we see CHYA, that's just the abbreviation for the California Healthy Youth Act. I might slip up and say Chaya or Chia or something, but that's, it's all the same thing. I just want to make sure we're saying the same thing. So in the California Healthy Youth Act, items that have to be addressed, it needs to be age-appropriate. It needs to be accessible to all learners. It needs to be medically accurate and objective. It needs to encourage communication, healthy communication with trusted adults. It needs to promote committed relationships, healthy relationships, as well as teach gender concepts and recognize diverse sexual orientations inclusive of diverse identities. The curriculum that the committee is recommending is Puberty Talks. And they had a vote at that fifth and final meeting. And the vote was 10 to 5 of those present that voted for Puberty Talk. One of the questions that came up prior was, I think there maybe was some confusion around the eighth-grade health curriculum versus the fifth grade. So I just wanted to put a slide up here. This is, these are the topics taught in Teen Talk, which is the eighth-grade curriculum. I just wanted to make sure that everybody saw that and that those were the topics for eighth grade. As always, and this is right in the California Healthy Youth Act, there's a parental opt-out. So parents are to be notified at the beginning of the school year or when they enroll, if they enroll, you know, after the beginning of the school year. As well as in our district, no later than 14 days prior to instruction starting, we send out a second notice to make sure that parents have that opportunity to opt out. Now, in the, one of the questions that came up in a previous board or presentation was, why is it not an opt-in versus an opt-out? So the California Healthy Youth Act explicitly states it's an opt-out, not an opt-in. So that's written there in the law. Just as a point of reference, this year, we had just over 30, what is that, 33, 34-ish opt-outs for eighth-grade health. Again, just as a pattern, one of the questions that came up was how are parents notified? So for our eighth grade, we sent letters home at the beginning of the year. We also sent Parent Square messages. We sent the letters out again prior to instruction. We held five in-person parent meetings in the evenings to help parents understand the curriculum, as well as held two virtual meetings for those that couldn't participate in person. And we also created an electronic opt-out form. We know sometimes those backpacks are an abyss of papers. So we created a form that is easily accessible for the parents to submit, and it goes right to the school of attendance so that, so we have that available. We did make this pursuant to the requisite ed code. We made this curriculum available to parents. So you can see here, here are the dates and times that we did that. We, on the table to the right are all the extended times. So eight to five normal hours, we were open every day except for holidays and weekends. Except for, you can see here, for several days during those weeks, we were open till 7:00 PM. And on three different Saturday occasions, we were also open to help parents facilitate their ability to get there. We recognize that's a, that's a struggle. Some of the questions that came up with the June 9 board meeting, one of the questions was, how did the California Healthy Youth Act come about? So I just gave a brief summary here. In early 2015, AB 329, which is the actual Assembly Bill number, was proposed by Assembly Member Shirley Weber. During those several months, it was debated in August. It passed the State Assembly and the Senate after several debates around the curriculum. And as I mentioned before, in October, Governor Jerry Brown signed it into law. And then that became effective January 1, 2016, for school districts to start the process of putting that into place. Another question that came up was, are there other districts in the area that use a Puberty Talks curriculum? So we reached out to Puberty Talk, the publisher, and they gave us a list of about 190, just over 190 districts within the, in the state that use this curriculum. Here are some examples of districts that maybe are kind of up and down the valley. I recognize that this is from the publisher. So if a district has made a choice past that point, but this is, this is the way that we were able to get that information from the publisher. So this slide here, you'll see this slide here. We put this, we have a correction to this slide. And so that's a new slide here. You, out there, you'll see a kind of an additional slide that's going to go in here, this handout here. And the question was asked, do we, do we need to teach or include, excuse me, gender identity topics? So the short answer is, if we offer any health education, whether that be in the seventh through 12th grade or any grade below it, if we offer any health education, it must include instruction in gender identities. So the California Healthy Youth Act requires school districts to provide students with comprehensive sexual health and HIV prevention education at least once in middle school and once in high school. Instruction under California Healthy Youth Act is not required for grade six or below. But if the district decides to provide instruction in the Chaya topics to students in grade six or below, it must include instruction in gender, gender expression, gender identity, and explore the harm of negative gender stereotypes pursuant to ed code 51933. So that's right from the California Healthy Youth Act. Another question that came up at the board meeting was, are parents allowed to opt out of specific subjects, including gender identity lessons? So the short answer is yes, they're allowed to opt out. Parents can opt their child out in writing. That's the form that we mentioned earlier. For any portion of the district's instruction in health that conflicts with religious beliefs or the parent or, of the parent or student, upon which the student shall be excused from that part of the instruction. So any portion of that curriculum, the parent opt-out would relate to that. Another question that was asked is, do the lessons have to be taught together? Meaning male and female in the same room? The short answer is, the law does not address whether the lessons need to be done. There's some discretion among the district on how that can be done. They do give, the legal counsel there did give some advice in regards to recommending that students should not be separated by sex assigned at birth or perceived gender during sexual health instruction in grades K6. But that again, is at the discretion of the school district. So the next steps would be to submit this, the approval of the adoption of the Puberty Talk curriculum, with or without any modifications that the board would like to do. And with that, I turn the time back over to you, President Miasis.
Thank you, Mr. Rich, for that report. All right, we will open it up for public comment, but before we do that, I want to just set a couple, say a couple of things before we do that. So as, as I said in the last meeting, we, we had a lot of public comment via email, via voicemail, and other, other modes of media. And that was before the last meeting. And between the last meeting and this meeting, we got even more. And I think we actually got more email and comments to the board. And we, we collected those, and I believe we have all of those together. So we had plenty, a lot of voice from the community on this. And we did have that there were some pretty good, pretty clear themes that came up. Just as last time, the theme of, we have quite a few people that would want the curriculum and quite a few people that do not want the curriculum. So those were the major themes that we got from the community and from the emails and the comments. Knowing that, I will, we will welcome board, we will welcome public comments right now. We do have a lot of people, both here and in the overflow room. Knowing that we've gotten a lot of comments before, we want, I do, we definitely want to open it up. But at the same time, we do have, we have a limited amount of time, right? So depending on who would like to speak, we will, I will take a measure. So, depending on who would like to speak, we will, I will take a measurement, and we will have to adjust, likely adjust the time of each speaker, and possibly adjust the amount of time that we have total. That also being, so, in just a second, I'm going to ask for hands raised, and who like, who would like to speak on this topic. One more time, we do want to model respect for others, we know that there are other opinions, we know that, that we have people that for, for, for different reasons have, have thoughts and want to share those with the board and with the public. So, that being said, we do want to model for our kids, this is why we're here, we saw the video, we want to model for our kids a show of respect, and that, last time, I had to stop a couple of times for boos, and we know that boos, that's, that's disrespectful. So, if that happens again, I will ask us to stop and just think about how we are treating others. So, please allow the speakers to speak and, and be respectful for that. Thank you on that. So, we'll, we'll start with hands raised, we do have someone in the, one second, we do have someone in the overflow room to count if there are any hands raised in the overflow room, and then we'll take a measure of that. So, in both rooms, do we have, do we have someone in both rooms?
Yes.
That have already said they want to speak?
Yes.
Okay, 11. How many in this room would like to speak? Okay, please keep your hands raised. Can somebody help count those for me? And you said 11 in the other room? Yeah, I can't, so I count 60 total. One minute, one minute per person will give us an hour. That will probably take us to the, to the end of our time. So, I mean, we generally go 30 minutes, but we'll extend it to an hour to get as many people to speak as possible. 60, we'll take 60 in a minute, that'll be good. Antoinette, can, I think we're going to need someone to organize that.
So, what we're going to do is have folks line up, line up in here, and then also the 10 from the other room, and then we'll have a staff member at the end of that 60, so then you'll know when you get to 60, you'll be counting as well.
That's good.
The piece that we really need to make sure of is that we don't add people into the line, because we're, at the, at the end of this time, we would have gone through 60.
True. Antoinette, what we're going to do is, can, we're going to give everyone a, if you can just write down a number as they're in line, give them a card, and then, it's going to be like a, yeah, it, it's going to be like, like the DMV, you know? Call, call in number 102, we're not going to get that high there. Yeah, so we'll, we'll start, do the numbers. Hopefully, we haven't, we didn't get more people in line than the 60, we, again--
Raise their hands.
They did raise their hands. We're going to, we've got a lot of people to speak, we are going to hold you to the one minute, okay? So, I, I don't want to be rude when I ask you to, to wrap it up, but just pretend you're on the Emmys or the, whatever, and then when the time goes off, it's, it's your time, okay? Turn off the microphone, we could do that, but we'll just ask you nicely to, to sit. Once you have your number, you could probably sit down and then come up when it's, when it's your, when it's your turn.
So, I would recommend that you have like five in the queue, so we're not waiting for folks to get out of their seats.
Good, that's a good question. So, we'll take five in line, and then after the five, when somebody comes up, the next person goes into line. Does that make sense? So, you don't have to stand for an hour and a half, or an hour. All right, we'll get started, so we can get rolling. So, the first gentleman, you're welcome to come speak.
My, my name is Ron Weersham. I'm a retired fifth and sixth-grade teacher at Sonoma Elementary in Modesto. I taught 38 years. Each year, we taught family life sex ed to our students. The material was age-appropriate. This material is not age-appropriate for 10-year-olds. Much of it is not appropriate for eighth through 12th grade. Teaching this in fifth grade is not mandated. The California Healthy Youth Act mandates sex ed taught somewhere during seventh through 12th grade. So, why do fifth graders need this curriculum? We don't teach Algebra II to second graders. Why are we confusing young minds? Early in the lessons, children are to explore their gender. If a 10-year-old boy doesn't like girls now, because he might think they have cooties, is he supposed to question if he is gay, gender-neutral, or cisgender? If a 10-year-old girl doesn't like boys now, is she supposed to question if she is lesbian, gender-fluid, or non-binary?
Thank you, I realize a minute is not very long. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Elaine Hill, and I am a retired elementary school teacher for Modesto City Schools. I also had two years of child development instruction and training before I even got my credential. But I'm talking about special ed today. Special ed, I taught for several years, I had first through sixth graders. A lot of them, because of their health issues, were performing at second and third grade levels, so if they're a fifth grader or sixth grader, they're going to be getting this material, and they are performing at third grade level, it's not appropriate. Also, when I retired in 2013, I became a testing, tester for the district, for second-language learners, that's all children, that's families speak another language other than English. Year after year after year, saw several children that took the test over and over again. Yes, they could speak in some English, but they did not understand a lot of the things that would make it necessary for them to graduate or be successful in their classroom. I agree with a board member--
I'm sorry, I--
Because diverse children from different diversities do not understand this either, because they don't have the language equipped to re, to know what this is about.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, this is Jake Leachka. The video you showed us today was very impressive, and I congratulate those who achieved such great achievements, but here's a reality check. Modesto City Schools is only a 28% proficiency level for reading, math, and everything else. That's to give that last speaker the number, 28%. Are we really going to spend resources on teaching sex education or what you call health education, while the most basic requirements of academics is at a very abysmal performance? What are we doing? Is this the kind of record we want to even retire on, ma'am? Is this what we want for our students? 28% of our students are testing at their grade level? I urge you that before you tell us to opt-out, you should opt-out of this curriculum. Allow the parents to do their job, you do yours.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Alexis, I'm a former MCS student, a new parent, and I've worked with children for over six years. You've said that this curriculum reflects community support because it was voted on, but only 18% of the community were, were parents, and two of them dropped out. At the last meeting, 24 out of 28, that is 86% of the speakers opposed the curriculum. That is the voice of this community. Even board members have said that they would opt their own children out. Trustee Irvin, you said that the content shown to your seventh grader led to inappropriate behavior in the classroom. If it's inappropriate for a seventh grader, how is it appropriate for a fifth grader? You're being asked to spend $30,000, nearly the median income in Modesto, on curriculum that families plan to opt-out of. Why spend the money if our kids won't even be in the room? This curriculum was written in the Bay Area and does not reflect our valley's culture, values, or experiences, and it hasn't been reviewed by a child psychologist. It's not just an oversight, that's a risk. Teachers are not therapists and should not be put in that position. If you would opt your child out, please stand now or raise your hand. That is the real committee. These are the families that you serve, vote no.
My name is Nicole, and I'm concerned about the safe adult language in both curriculum. I was 10 years old, this is me when I was harmed by someone who seemed to be safe and supportive and who I thought I could trust. The teacher's binder lists several people in the family, school, and community categories who would be considered safe, and instructs kids to have conversations with them. It says you can trust a person who listens to you, makes you feel comfortable, or offers help to you. In the very next section, it presents scenarios where the people in those very categories are the ones crossing boundaries and causing them harm, like showing them porn, porn and touching them inappropriately. This sends a confusing message to young children. Kids might believe that if someone makes them feel safe or understood, they must be trustworthy. You're not raising awareness, you're lowering defenses. When you tell kids to talk about safe, to sex with safe adults, you're making them unsafe. You call it education, but predators call it opportunity. If someone approached a child with this, I'd call the police, and you want to call it a lesson. I expect you to educate our kids and not expose them, and I urge you to vote no.
Thank you.
Hi, Adele Questonberry, and I'm just a concerned grandmother of four children that are in the Modesto City Schools. I'm coming at this a little different, can you not hear? Okay, can you hear now? Okay. I'm coming at this a little different angle, so I went down and looked at the curriculum, and it's disturbing, totally disturbing. It's indoctrination, it's grooming our children. It's a very dark day if this passes. I, I feel so horrible for our children if any have to hear this kind of stuff, so obviously my grandchildren will be opting out. It should be changed, it should be opt-in. So, I also feel terrible for the teachers, I understand the teachers cannot opt-out of teaching this curriculum, so I feel it's a degrading thing for the teachers that have to teach and talk about this stuff to the children. I feel that if, if any citizen was to lure a child in and talk to them about this situation, they would be arrested.
Thank you.
And so, I ask you deeply to, look deeply in your souls to vote no on this curriculum.
Good evening, my name is Daily Perry, I'm a parent of an upcoming MCS fifth grader. I'm grateful to everyone in this room for showing up tonight, it's easy to see that we all take very seriously the safety of our kids. I want to urge the board to listen to the research and the data about how to keep our kids safe, and the research is clear, educating our kids keeps them safe. Research shows that inclusive education contributes to safer school climates, reduces bullying, and improves mental health outcomes for all students. Let's give our children the knowledge and the confidence they need to grow into compassionate, empathetic, well-informed people. Please vote yes on the complete puberty talk curriculum.
To the school board, Dr. Naguchi, my name is Dr. Eric Haley, I want to start my minutes with this quote, it's from Hitler, "Give me your children, and in 10 years, I will have changed society." There's a higher hidden agenda behind this curriculum. If you teach more than two sexes, it goes from education into indoctrination. I wanted to work till 70, but I retired at 66, because I got tired of going to the principal office for something that had to do with something sexual, and all I said was, "Go ask your parents about that, we can't talk about that here in school." So, I was not able to affirm that student's question to me, as a human being, and so, you put your teachers in a bind when you have to address these controversial topics, and so, I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave you with what I got sent to the office to. One day, a kid went to the, went to the bathroom, and, and he said, "I'm confused, I don't know which one to use."
Thank you, sir.
And I just said, "Check your pants."
This dropped, okay. Hello, my name is Kelly Geple, I'm an eight-year special education teacher, mother and lifelong member of the Modesto community, and I'm here to encourage you to vote yes on the California Healthy Youth Act-approved sex education curriculum, puberty talk. Rather than going through all the talking points of why it's an inclusive, age-appropriate, comprehensive curriculum, or combating the fear-mongering lies, social media campaigns that have proponents against this curriculum have decided to spread, I'm up here to call a spade a spade. Every single person in this room knows why we are here, people don't show up in droves for choosing an ELA curriculum, like what you see currently because of the implications of what this vote represents. This vote represents if you want our children to be on the side of education, that represents a data-driven approach, which teaches children appropriately. You all have to decide with your conscience which direction to vote. Are you going to vote to help create well-rounded adults with an inclusive, age-appropriate, comprehensive curriculum, or are you going to vote to instill the morals of a few people under the whole community? Whichever way you vote, keep in mind that you are here to represent us. Thank you.
My name is Michelle Tomlinson, I emailed each of you already this morning, so I'm going to leave those comments there. I just want to add to that, though. This, these people in here, the majority of the people here, I want to know what the numbers, the statistics are in the groups of people that you say are three major, major roles in your decision, and I want you to pick that majority. As I said in my email, I'm not here representing my children, my child anymore, or just a handful of families advocating for them, I'm here on behalf of 26,000 voters in my district, and their values, and their beliefs, and I can't let this pass. You guys have to think about, you're the ones indoctrinating our children, okay? The reason our kids are depressed and think there are different sexes is because you guys are supporting this ideology, and it has to stop, and you're sick if you vote this in.
Thank you.
You're predators.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody, my name is Shia Lloyd, and I have a daughter in Modesto City Schools. I have been a proud and vocal supporter of Modesto City Schools even before my daughter began to go to school in the district. I would be incredibly disappointed if the board allowed misinformation and ignorance to guide its path forward. Several studies and research findings suggest a link between children having knowledge about their bodies, including correct anatomical terms, and an increased protection against abuse and empowering them to report abuse. Fifth-grade health curriculums promote healthy habits, enhances mental and emotional well-being, increases safety awareness, reduces risky behaviors, prepares students for puberty, and connects health to learning. A group of parents at Teacher's Administration have dedicated their time, energy, and knowledge to spending weeks determining that puberty talk is our best chance forward, and I stand in support of their hard work. Thank you for your time, and please vote yes on the complete puberty talk curriculum. Informed kids equals smart kids equals safe kids.
Good evening, my name is Elizabeth Guptel. I took the opportunity, as I hope all of you did, to preview, preview the curriculum, and as a teacher, and a parent, and a woman, I find puberty talk precisely educational and easily presentable. It is extremely important to teach young children correct and scientifically accurate information about their changing bodies-- about their changing bodies, emotions, and behavior risks associated with adolescent decision-making. Puberty Talk accomplishes this. Puberty Talk is a curriculum adopted by Stanislaus Union Elementary School District, Stockton Unified School District, Manteca Unified School District, and Calaveras Union School District. These are all districts geographically close and demographically similar to Modesto City Schools. I understand that decisions about curriculum covering puberty and sex education are sensitive and have a lot of interests to consider. However, since parents are given the opportunity to allow their students to opt out, a yes vote is critical.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jaime Perez. I am a son, a husband, an MCS parent, and a United States veteran. I'm here tonight to voice my strong support for puberty talk. Studies show that school-based programs significantly increase kids' ability to identify and report abuse. A systematic review found children were up to three and a half times more likely to disclose inappropriate touching after such education. One study concluded that comprehensive sexual health education programs like puberty talk reduce confirmed child sexual abuse cases by 17%, unconfirmed reports by 34% in places that implemented them. I am Latino, and we make up 72% of the student population in MCS schools. But only 39% of Latino parents talk to their kids about sex. There is a big disconnect between parents and teens when it comes to anything sex-related. Our community needs this curriculum so that our youth are better educated for their bodies and have safe space to discuss these topics.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Maureen Hall. I'm a daughter of an LA City Elementary School teacher of 50 years. As a mother of five and a grandmother of two, I would like to voice that I believe 5th grade is too young to teach gender ideologies. We all stood and said the pledge, "One nation under God." Which God, Jesus or Baphomet? In Genesis 1:27, "So God created man in his own image; in the image of God he created him; male and female he created him." Students are just starting to think about being male or female as puberty hits them at this age. This theology at this age will only create confusion. If you're going to teach students at this age, you need to also teach an alternative of what the Bible states. You can't say, "God, take them out of church or out of school," and then teach a religion that supports Baphomet as a different god. I urge you to vote no.
Hi, my name is Nathan Lloyd. I'm an MCS parent, and I'm a professor at MJC. And I teach information literacy and critical thinking. And because of that, I think it's very important to address some misinformation that has been spread. I've been attending some of these school board meetings, and I've been hearing parents act like there's some conspiracy involved when this process for the curriculum implementation has been very transparent. I've been hearing words thrown around like socialism and communism a couple of weeks ago when I don't think the people throwing those terms around know what those terms mean. It was just asserted here today that this curriculum was not approved by experts when the puberty talk curriculum is published by the nonprofit Health Connected. And all of it has been approved by Medical Advisory Council, which includes a pediatrician, a nurse practitioner, a medical doctor, and a licensed clinical psychologist who serves as the chief clinical officer of Children's Health Council. His expertise is children's health, mental health. I urge you to approve all in its entirety.
Thank you.
My name is Pat Egenberger. I have taught around the country for 38 years. I have seen the friends of my children harassed so terribly that one of them left Modesto and moved to San Francisco right after high school. I saw one of my friend's sons was chased by a bunch of athletes because he had makeup on. Children do develop very early a sense of their sexual orientation. And they need to know that it's okay. The people who have a queer orientation are very small, but nobody would choose to be queer with all the things that happen to you. I take this personally because I have another relative in the schools.
Thank you so much.
My name is Christina Calderon. As a mother of two children, one entering 5th grade, I'm completely appalled by this material that could potentially be shown to our children. Not only is it presenting radical gender theory that queer theory isn't theory at all, it's clear indoctrination. This material as a whole is not appropriate for our children. I heard someone today just say that this is appropriate curriculum. How is discussing masturbation and wet dreams appropriate? This does not belong in our classrooms. Let teachers be teachers. Vote no. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jean. And I'm a mother, grandmother, great-grandmother. And I used to have respect, high respect, for the school education program. I don't anymore because of what's being taught here. As this one girl before me stated, somebody stated in the talk before about puberty talk. Well, I'm gonna say something that's very embarrassing but that it's being taught to our children. And it's about acceptable questions for teachers to answer. What is oral sex? What is a blowjob? What is annual sex? How do gay people have sex? How do you know if someone is gay? I don't think that's appropriate to teach our children at all. And if you think so, you're sick in your mind.
Good evening, my name is Jan Anshus. I'm a mother and a grandmother. And I reviewed the curriculum for myself, and it's not appropriate for 5th graders, for 10-year-olds, 10- or 11-year-olds. Some of the curriculum is, in the pages on 59, it's questioned students who identify as girls. They want to talk about on page 163, gender dysphoria. That means a state of feeling very unhappy, uneasy, or dissatisfied. Do we want to have them questioned? They already have a lot of questions already. They're already going through all these motions and things that they're dealing with. Do we really want to pull that out of them and make them, "Well, yeah, I do feel uneasy. Yeah, what is wrong with me?" On page 77 is an explanation of the M-word. I can't, they said it, but I have too embarrassed to say it in front of you guys. So I am urging you to vote no. It was mentioned the last meeting that this curriculum is $30,000. Why are we doing it when it's not mandated? I'm urging you, imploring you, vote no.
Bianca Signorelli. And I don't think a lot of people have a problem with health education being taught. It's what's in this particular curriculum that there is an issue. And so there are other curriculums that can be looked at and brought in. It is not mandated by the state. You presented that it comes from law, AB 329. I have it here, verbatim. It doesn't say anything about this. So this is a curriculum that has been put together by somebody that's selling to the school system to make money, and it doesn't need to be done. AB 329 just requires for seventh, in the junior high, basically, in the high school. If you opt to do it into this level, yes, you must meet that criteria. The criteria is basically on the HIV subjects. Information about abstinence and sexual activity, information about efficacy of the FDA-approved transmittal treatments, information about the effectiveness and the risk of HIV, information, again, about, it's mostly about HIV and where they can go into the public and that kind of thing and ask questions.
Thank you.
So you've morphed this into something else also.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Annie Tello. This is my nine-year-old daughter. I have four children, and she's the youngest. And we have strong religious beliefs that we should be voting no on this. I did ask her what her opinion was on this. We do openly talk about things at home, and I feel it's a parent's job to talk about it, not to learn about it at school. So I actually recorded her talking about what she thinks about it, and I want to play what she said. So give me just a second.
Were you a boy or female? And he wanted that for a reason. So I think you shouldn't be able to choose, like, your identity or like what your, like, sex thing is. And, yeah. I just think that they shouldn't be doing this.
So these are her words. I did not tell her to say this. I really strongly believe that parents should be talking about their children about these things, not the school talking about it with children that are not their children.
Thank you.
Thank you, board members, for giving space to share feedback on this matter. Your esteemed positions are very important as you are considered gatekeepers as it relates to education. It is with your discretion that will either allow things in or keep doors closed that would try to come against your sphere of influence. The curriculum doesn't sound like it's mandatory. It is troubling to consider spending $30,000 on a curriculum proposed when trustee Daly mentioned that there are community resources that educate for free. As I mentioned to Assemblyman Juan Alanis, there is no price tag on innocent children. Money like this can be well-spent on other things that can greatly benefit our children. There is a lot of potential for our county to raise amazing leaders. Gender ideologies can be shared by the parent's discretion. There are community resources in the county that can support adults and children who are interested in these services. Education should be focused on the subjects that will carry the child into their adult years, who can overcome and be resilient in today's charged climate.
Thank you.
Good evening, trustees. My name is Ryan Flaherty, and I'm the parent of two MCS students, including a daughter who will be in 5th grade next year. Since the June 9th meeting, I've been focused on trying to understand one key question. Is the puberty talks curriculum age-appropriate content for 5th graders? I saw conflicting claims from experts in the June 9th meeting. Trustee Daly argued it's not developmentally appropriate, citing her LMFT credentials, while a comment letter from another LMFT said it is age-appropriate. So I turned to meta-studies, which are studies that look across a bunch of different studies to understand trends. And these studies overwhelmingly show that puberty education, like puberty talks, is not only age-appropriate but recommended for elementary school students. I also want to note that similar opposition to teen talk last year resulted in very low opt-out rates, according to data Mr. Rich just showed. 7% at Roosevelt and 1% or lower in other junior high. So this suggests the vocal opposition you see here doesn't reflect actual opt-out numbers. I urge the board to look at the science
Thank you.
and support the full curriculum. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maria. I'm a mom of four kids. I have viewed the curriculum myself. It is very graphic and doesn't reflect how we talk to our children. In our culture, we don't talk to our children in such a blunt way, especially about sensitive topics. We believe in handling these conversations with care, privacy, and at the right time. I'm not saying that we avoid hard topics, but we approach them with respect, modesty, and when we believe our children are ready. That decision belongs to the parents. This curriculum was made in the Bay Area, but our community and culture is different. We have different values and different ways of speaking to children. I'm asking you that you respect that. This curriculum does not reflect our families or how we raise our children. Please listen to our voices of parents. We deserve a say.
Hello, my name is Brittany and I have four kids. My oldest going into 5th grade. I keep hearing the term "age-appropriate." Let's be clear, that doesn't mean giving all kids the same information at the same time. It means recognizing that kids mature differently, and only parents are truly equipped to judge what their child is ready to hear. For me, age-appropriate means I answer my child's questions when they come, not when the curriculum decides its time. The curriculum removes parents from the equation and replaces us with a one-size-fits-all model that ignores our voice, our role, and our values. That's not partnership, it's overreach. Saying, "Well, they're seeing it on the internet anyway," isn't a valid reason. Not all kids are exposed to this, and we shouldn't normalize exposure just because some kids encounter it. I'm not asking the school to parent my child. I'm asking you to respect that I already do. Please don't trade parental trust for political pressure. Let the parents and the teachers focus on education.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jasmine White. Please understand this is not about hate whatsoever because as a Christian, I'm called to love everyone. This is about the age at which the children learn these topics. I was here at the last meeting and had a question that wasn't addressed. There are multiple parents who opted out of the curriculum last year when a similar curriculum was being taught. However, their children were required to do makeup work for the said curriculum that their parents opted out of. My question is, why did this happen? And doesn't that act of the school go against the parents' basic rights? As a child, I grew up in a modest home and found myself thinking that certain girls were beautiful. Although I was attracted to boys, and still am, the thought came across my mind, "Am I gay?" As a teenager, if I would have been coached to think because I thought women were beautiful that I was gay, I wouldn't have the wonderful life I have today. If I, as a teenager, wasn't prepared for this curriculum, how much more are children now unprepared to choose their gender or sex ideology?
Thank you.
Please vote no.
Good evening, my name is Aiden Armesto. I'm 20 years old, and what I'm gonna speak about actually makes me uncomfortable. So imagine how a 10-year-old kid in 5th grade is gonna feel. One lesson promotes anal sex as a safer alternative to vaginal sex simply because it reduces the risk of pregnancy. And that is deeply irresponsible, because it completely ignores the fact that anal sex carries a significantly higher risk of HIV and other STDs, also including STIs. Over half of the students, uh, in this district are Hispanic or Black. In California, forty-four percent of all new HIV cases occur in the Latino community and fifteen percent in the Black community. This curriculum places our children, especially in minority communities, at hi- at greater health risks, all while pretending to protect them. The California Healthy Youth Act has been in effect since two thousand and six. Nearly two decades later, can we honestly say that is working? It appears that the motive isn't sex ed, but sex-led indoctrination. That comes with severe consequences.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tiffany, and I'm a concerned parent and MCS employee. That's my twenty, twenty-year-old son, this is my ten-year-old daughter. I believe you're crossing a line, making decisions that belong only to parents. You are proposing to introduce sensitive material to kids that directly affects their understanding of sexuality, boundaries, and identity, and you're doing it without meaningful parental involvement. In the state of California, a child must be eighteen to get a tattoo, body piercing, use a tanning bed, or receive a massage. Eighteen to join the military, twenty-one to purchase alcohol, cigarettes, or marijuana, twenty-one before they can become a police officer or a firefighter. Why? Because certain decisions require maturity guidance and parental oversight. Who gave you the right to decide what's appropriate for my child? When the law doesn't even let my child make a lesser decisions without me? You were elected to serve families, not sidestep them. Please return that authority to the people who love and know their children best, their parents. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nicole Molina, and currently I'm a childcare provider, but I formerly worked for San Joaquin County and Merced County School Districts. And I'm telling you right now, I urge you to vote no on this. When I was a child, this was taught in seventh grade, and it was this much compared, compared to what you guys are putting in now. If I told you I was a cat, would you treat me like a cat? No, why are we gonna lie to our children? There are men and women, and that is it. What is put in this, my God made two genders. Jesus Christ made two genders. Why are we promoting mental health problems? Mental health hasn't even been implemented in here. What this will affect fifth graders. Fifth graders are not mature enough. They're not mature enough now. You can't protect children from being bullied, but yet you're sending them off into a war zone to be bullied, to start more than what you guys can even control in this. Two genders.
Good evening, and thank you. My name is Matt Martino, and I am here tonight for two reasons. One, my ten-year-old son will be a fifth grader in the district next year, so I'm asking you to approve the puberty talk curriculum, so that he can benefit it from it, his peers can benefit from it, because not only is the information valuable, but there's value in students seeing that these sensitive topics can be discussed in a way that is polite, productive, and respectful. Also, I am married to an eighth-grade science teacher in the district, so I'm well acquainted with the teen talk controversy from last year. And I want to just reiterate something that was shown. Thirty-three opt-outs is about two percent of the eighth-grade population. The people, the, the activists in this room are not representative of the community. That number is. If you pass puberty talk, you're gonna see the same engagement, because families in this community expect this education. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dee Leslie, and I'm a parent of a child in Modesto City Schools. And I'd like to make two points. The first one is, we have fifty-three percent of our children not meeting their reading grade level. And there is a direct correlation with prisoners in prison and illiteracy. So this is our future generation, folks. So you guys, you board members are deciding to choose ten and eleven-year-old children what masturbation is, and you are hype, you are hyper-sexualizing our children is what you're doing, and it is wrong. And I can't believe that any of you will vote yes and be able to live with yourself. These are little kids. Um, my son's about to speak next, and he, he wrote, he, whatever he says, he's saying it. I didn't tell him to say anything. But, um, and another thing I was gonna say, um, is, um, oh, I, never mind. Um, but anyways, um, oh, yeah, that's what I was gonna say. Also, um, at fifteen years old, one hundred percent of boys have masturbated, and only twenty-five percent of girls have masturbated. That's five years longer develop, child development.
Thank you.
And twenty-five percent of girls can't even relate.
Thank you.
My name is Elijah Galindo. I'm only thirteen years old. That was my mom up there. I just want to say, I am a uncle of younger cousins, and I don't think this is right to be teaching them about masturbation. They're just innocent. They haven't done anything bad. I think this may be right tenth to eleventh. I just don't think it's right to teach them these things when they're only in fifth grade and they've never experienced or heard of anything sexual. Maybe some of them have, but I think it's just safe to maybe teach it later or just not teach it at all. It's the parent's job to tell them and to, like, explain to them what this is. It's not for the teachers to teach, that is the parent's job to do. I couldn't really think of a speech, but this is gonna be it.
I'll tell you how this happened. Ten of you on this board voted for it. That's a shame. I'm gonna say-
Can you, I'm sorry, sir, can you state your name for the record?
It's David Eck.
Okay, thank you. What, can you restart his time, 'cause I interrupted him? Thank you. Go ahead.
I'm just saying, you know, talking at the very beginning up here, uh, here's how this thing got started, all these things were happening, and, and, you know. What happened was ten of you out of the fifteen voted yes. And I said, "That's shameful." Innocent children, as everybody's going on tonight, they shouldn't be, they shouldn't be shown this stuff. I'm just a simple guy who cares about the innocent children. A wise man once said, "If you mess with the innocent children, doesn't matter about parents can opt out, okay? If you mess with one single person, you're better off the millstone tied around your neck and you're thrown in the sea, the bottom of the sea." Folks, you're without excuse if you voted for this.
Good evening, members of the board, teachers, and fellow concerned people. My name is Marissa Cabrera, and I am eighteen years old. I'm here tonight not as a voice, not as a voice in this room, but because I care deeply about the, our children, their hearts, their minds, and their futures. After reading Puberty, the Wonder Years, I was heartbroken, because this curriculum introduces com- complex topics like gender identity, sexual orientation, and consent to fifth graders, maybe ten, eleven years old, those of whom are still learning to be friends or afraid of the dark. This isn't about denying education, it's about timing. If we rush these topics, we risk confusion, anxiety, and silencing the most important part of their life, their parents who know their children best. I am not against health education. I'm against replacing compassion with content and curiosity with confu- Thank you.
Hello, my name is Bethany, and I am an M, I was an MU MCS student who graduated, and I have taught junior high for the last eight years. I'm very concerned about this material, and I don't think that it meets the board's goal that you guys stated on Slide seven. This curriculum, including why, when, and how to masturbate, is not necessary to provide college and career readiness. I didn't receive this curriculum, and I was fully prepared for college and for my career, thanks to you guys. Another concern I have is that the teacher's binder states that over forty percent of the kids under the age of eighteen have suffered some sort of trauma, and over twenty percent of the kids have been traumatized more than once. It states that if a child is acting up, we shouldn't ask them why you are doing this, but instead ask, "What happened to you?" How, we as teachers, with the ratio of student to teacher, how are we supposed to ask those kids, "What happened to you? Are you okay? How am I supposed to take that time to actually meet their needs?" We should have sc- psychologists in the room, ready to deal with this. It's more damaging than it is helpful.
Thank you. Um, so, I, I just didn't want you, I, I need to run to the restroom right now. I didn't want you to feel like I'm running out, 'cause I didn't want to hear anybody or be rude. So, um, I'm gonna let everybody keep going. I'm gonna turn it over to Vice President Mejia, as, I'll be right back.
Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Celia, and I'm asking you to vote no to buying puberty talk. Working firsthand, um, with MCS students, so many students at this age are struggling with many things. Gender ideology is just an extra layer of confusion. Why pay thirty thousand dollars for material when the majority here, and I'm sure in your emails, say no? Consider this in your final vote tonight. Opt-out is not an option for three reasons. The first is the district is gonna lose money for the students not attending. Second is that, um, students might be pulled from the district completely. And third, if, um, opt-out is not an option when children are on the playground a fifth of their day every single day, and very few employees watching them. Recess is where bullying issues arise. What happens when we lose federal funding because the notice isn't adhered to? California Department of Public Health is ordered to remove all gender ideology from sex education in the next thirty days, or, or, sorry, sixty days, or at risk losing federal funding. I did email that article from San Francisco Chronicle to all of the board members. Um, next year's budget is paying almost eight thousand dollars for, to the, um, AB two eighteen.
Hello, hi, my name is Salis, and I'm a ural gynecologist, a women's health provider with a sixth-grade daughter. The average age of puberty nowadays for girls can be as low as eight to thirteen. Boys, nine to fourteen. Learning about how our bodies grow and change is not something to be embarrassed about. It's actually science. Just learning about their bodies early helps them to arm themselves with knowledge, to understand the amazing ways they grow, develop, and stay healthy. When we know the facts, we can make good choices, ask smart questions, and feel confident about what's happening as they grow up. Sex education also teaches them how to respect their own bodies, the bodies of others, and how to protect themselves. It's not about being grown-ups too soon. It's about learning real science that helps them take care of themselves now and in the future. I am asking you to vote yes to the puberty talk. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Pamela LaChapelle. Puberty Talk pushes students to adopt specific ideological positions which marginalize those with different viewpoints. Puberty Talk also attempts to normalize transgenderism, which is leading to boys in girls bathrooms and in girl sports. Most people see the dangerous consequences and unfairness of this practice. I also strongly object to providing names and contact information for clinics where minors can obtain free medical treatment without parental knowledge or permission. This information encourages kids to go behind their parents' backs. Unacceptable. If a child is being abused, we should provide preemptive measures that are far more helpful to them than this curriculum. Puberty Talk can be a tool for pedophiles. We've talked about that. It disarms kids by normalizing sexual activity that is exploitative and even illegal for ten and eleven-year-olds. A pedophile could use this material to desensitize kids to their sexual advances by describing these behaviors as pleasurable. Thank you.
My name is Linda Legacy. I have a master's in social work from Stan State. My thesis work involved the sexuality knowledge of students in the Central Valley. Comprehensive sexuality knowledge is a very important factor in maintaining good sexual health. There are significant levels of sexually transmitted disease among our adolescents. And the level, despite the parents' desire to teach, the level of sexuality knowledge among these students is very, very, very poor. Better sexuality knowledge frees our children to make good decisions. Better education frees our children to communicate more openly with their parents about the physical changes and the emotional changes that are occurring in their bodies. Children become confused when they are deprived of, um, information or given misinformation.
Thank you.
Please vote yes on this measure.
Good evening, my name is Landon Whitney. I work with Senator Marie Alvarado Gill's office. I have a brief statement I'd like to read. This is from her. She says, "I am firmly opposed to this proposed curriculum and have heard from countless constituents, Modesto parents, who are rightfully outraged. This curriculum introduces sexualized content that simply does not belong in a fifth-grade classroom, let alone any public school classroom. There is no need for ten-year-olds to be discussing gender ideology, sexual orientation, or any content related to sexual behavior at school. These are deeply personal conversations that should happen at home between parents and their children, not dictated by a school district. I have always supported local control and respect the role of school boards in shaping education policy. However, school boards are elected by local stakeholders, and they must answer to the families they represent. Parents are the first and most important teachers in a child's life, and when they voice their concerns, schools need to listen to them, not override them."
Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Mark Hammond, and my blood pressure just went off on my, my, my watch here, and I do a lot of public speaking, but in a world where predators exist, isn't it just poor judgment to all of a sudden expect our ten-year-olds to not share? Teaching them about masturbation and expecting them to keep healthy with that? You know what's gonna happen when they're eleven, and then when they're twelve, when they're thirteen? It's gonna continue. We're educating them too soon on things that are not relevant for them. This is why I'm here. I'm simply here to recruit. I would love to recruit you guys, 'cause I work with hundreds, if not a thousand, men and women that suffer every day, and I'm gonna need you guys in fifteen years, 'cause I'm gonna be old. I'll be seventy-five in fifteen years, and I need you to come and help me mentor these people that have been traumatized by this education. Thank you so much.
My name is Cheryl Van Horn, and I just want to say, every parent has a fundamental right to direct the upbringing of their children, their medical care, their healthcare, their values. Parents know that they cannot protect their children from the world of sex, but parents have the right and responsibility to prepare their children for matters related to sex, commensurate with age and maturity known only by the parents. Your consideration of puberty talk is yet another example that it's extreme sex ed gender components, which are telling kids what to think rather than teaching kids how to think. It takes a very dogmatic approach regarding gender ideology and sexual behavior. The state isn't mandating this, so why are we trying to do it? Is this an extra cost to the district that doesn't need to be? So I'm asking you not to adopt any curriculum that contains sex ed components for fifth graders. I have a ten-year-old granddaughter, so I just can't imagine her getting into this. So if you still think that ten-year-old children need to learn about hormone replacement therapy, racial justice, blowjobs, detailed masturbation, sex-positive, and thirty-plus definitions of sexuality, then please, please, offer a class where parents can opt their children into this kind of behavior.
My name is Sean. Um, I'm the, the father of a seven-year-old child. And to, to, to just keep it simple, um, I don't think that this is necessary to be teaching the kids. It's something that I wouldn't, I, my kid really doesn't know anything about. I wouldn't want him to know about it. And if my son asks me for ice cream for dinner, my answer would be no. And I think most parents in this room would say the same thing, and it's because I know what's best for him. A real meal is best for him. And, and I also know that, that this, this curriculum that's, that's gonna be introduced to them, um, is not good for them at all. You know, um, I feel like it's, it's, uh, a manipulation almost, you know? For these kids to learn about things that they would never know, um, if it wasn't for the school, it kind of gives them an option to jump into something to, maybe just to fit in, you know what I mean? And, um, I don't think that, I, I'm asking you, please, please, like, really think about this tonight, and, uh, and, and vote no.
Hi. Good evening, my name is Kate Napier. I'm the parent of two MCS students, one who will be going into fifth grade in this upcoming school year. I, there's been a lot of discussion tonight and a lot of disagreement, but I wanted to focus on one thing that we all do agree on, which is, parents should be able to choose how their children are educated. And we have that through the opt-out program. If you vote to not include this curriculum, we cannot opt into it, those of us that want this curriculum for our children. But if you vote to include it, the parents who do not want this education for their children are able to opt out. So I ask you, please, to not censor the, this education from children who want it and families who want it. And you can see by the opt-out statistics from the eighth-grade teen talk that most of us do want it. So please allow the parents who want it to have it. Thank you.
Thank you. One, one second, one second, ma'am. I, so, we, where I think we're a little more than halfway. Um, the, you guys have been great and respectful. Uh, I want to remind you, booing or jeering is not respectful. And I would please ask you to remain respectful in the room. Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
Good evening, trustees. My name is Celia Garcia Perez. I'm a mother of three, including an incoming MCS fifth-grader. I want to ground this conversation in data, not fear. According to a two thousand and twenty-three national survey, forty-one percent of LGBTQ plus youth seriously considered suicide in the past year. But here's the hopeful part. That number drops significantly when young people feel supported, seen, and included, especially at school. Inclusive sex education is proven to reduce bullying, harassment, and feelings of isolation. A two thousand and twenty survey found that LGBTQ plus youth students in schools with inclusive health, health education were seventy-five percent more likely to feel safe. The benefits extend beyond them. Inclusive curriculum helps all students develop empathy, improve school climate, and reduce incidence of bullying overall. This isn't just about quality instruction, it's life-saving. Please vote yes on puberty talk curriculum in its entirety.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Patricia Gay, and I'm a parent of two current MCS students. I'm here to express my support for adopting the puberty talk curriculum for fifth grade in its entirety. Comprehensive health education has proven to be the best preventive measure against sexual assault. And the puberty talk curriculum is designed to teach children about inappropriate interactions and give them the tools they need to protect themselves. One of its central purposes is making sure students feel safe and valued. Opposition to this curriculum is purely based on anti-LGBTQ bigotry. And gender identity is important for children like mine who are non-binary to learn and understand. Three decades of research indicate that it helps prevent bullying and makes children feel safe. I urge the board to not give in to this religious bullying and to prove, approve the puberty talk curriculum- curriculum in its entirety.
Can you, thank you. So one moment. I do want to also remind the speakers to be respectful in your comments as well. Thank you very much. Go ahead.
Good evening, trustees. My name is Ramon Messick, and I am an MCS alum. I stand before you here today urging you to vote no on the puberty talk curriculum. It oversimplifies complex biological and psychological realities, presenting gender identity and expression as a fluid spectra based on flimsy social theory. It misrepresents biological sex as a minor component, ignoring the clear binary norm and the rarity of intersex conditions. Its subjective definitions confuse the students, undermining their understanding of human development and risks stifling critical thinking rather than fostering it. Sex is an observed reality, existing independently of our understanding or perception of it. As someone who was bullied and struggled with my identity in elementary school, I am most appreciative that I grew up with clear gender norms, which gave me the confidence to accept and embrace my roles and responsibilities as a man. Our children deserve a curriculum rooted in evidence, not ideology. Please vote no on the puberty talk curriculum. Thank you.
My name is Weston. I've been a mental health professional for about the last nine years, and I'm a parent of two daughters, the oldest of which will be in fifth grade next year. I'm here to voice my strong support for puberty talk. I know these conversations can feel uncomfortable. I also know silence and confusion are exactly what predators rely on. Education is one of the most effective ways to break that silence. When we delay teaching kids about their bodies, boundaries, and how to speak up, we're not protecting them, we're making them more vulnerable. Research shows us that when kids are taught to correct names for body parts and understand what safe and unsafe touch looks like, they're much more likely to recognize abuse and tell someone. In fact, one review found out children who got this kind of education were more, three times as likely, more likely to disclose abuse than those who didn't. That's huge. It's not just about knowing, it's about feeling empowered. Kids who understand their rights are less likely to be manipulated, more likely to ask for help if something happens. That's the kind of knowledge that can literally protect a child from harm. Please vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. My name is David Sandoval, and I'm an LCSW. I've worked in healthcare with children and adults. And I just want to say that in my own life and my own education, in the school district where I was raised, we had health, sex education in fifth grade, seventh grade, and ninth grade. So I'm going to start at the end and say, please vote yes in puberty talks. And then I'm going to say, what is really important is, knowledge is key for many of these students. Many of them do not get the information at home. Many of them do not get help when they need it. And this is very important for them to feel safe and empowered to speak for themselves. Thank you.
My name is Dr. Nicole McLauren. I'm a family doctor that has been taking care of patients in this community, adults, kids, teens, cis and trans LGBTQ, for about 12 years. I also have three children in the community, a fifth grader, a seventh grader, and a first grader. So this is very near and dear to my heart and very important, so thank you for this opportunity. Public puberty talk is appropriate at this age for 11-year-olds, fifth graders. They're already seeing their bodies change. They notice it, they see it in their peers. This gives the kids and the parents an opportunity to have evidence-based and safe discussions. They learn what their body parts are called, the scientific real names, there's not shame behind that. It empowers them. The research shows that if you are empowered, you know what's happening to your body, you know why it's happening to your body. It's not unusual, it's not shameful, it's not bad, it's just the way it is. Please help us and protect our kids so that they are empowered and can take care of themselves.
Thank you.
My name is Mary Narduli. I have a master's in clinical psychology. I've been a school counselor at three schools, and I've also taught high school teens that were parents or pregnant. And I can tell you that if they do not get science-based information, they will have more children, okay? Not because they just don't know what they don't know. And unfortunately, the parents aren't going to necessarily hear the questions that the children have. So you have to anticipate it. If we were talking about chemistry or some other subject, the board would not be frightened and the parents wouldn't be frightened if you said this was scientifically based and age-appropriate. So I urge you to vote yes so that children can know what is the real truth.
My name's Noah Wilson, and I'm the parent of two MCS students. I recently took time to review the slides and written materials, and in addition to being a parent, I'm also a teacher, so I considered this curriculum through both lenses. At the last meeting and this one, what I've heard again and again was that this material is not age-appropriate. However, the age when boys can begin to experience puberty is nine, and recent research shows that girls are beginning menstruation as early as eight years old. I also heard the perspective that our kids are not ready to learn this information because they are too young. As an educator, I can't agree with that position. We don't wait until a student is prepared to learn something, rather, we prepare them by educating them. Honestly, I couldn't identify anything erroneous or irrelevant in this curriculum, and I found the information factual and more of were presented in a way that offers respect to a diversity of experiences and perspectives. As the board members, as a board for public school, I hope that you can appreciate that education is different from indoctrination.
Thank you.
My name is Dr. Margaret Howe, and I'm a parent of two children, an MCS first grader and sixth grader. I'm also a practicing OB-GYN in this community for 11 years. I want to urge you to pass puberty talk and add back anatomic terminology. What we're doing at school and what we're doing at home is not working. In my practice, about 95% of my patients don't know the correct names for their anatomy: vulva, labia, vagina. They don't know what they are, and they don't know how to distinguish between them. Why does this matter? Because when patients can't adequately describe their symptoms, it leads to misdiagnosis, inappropriate treatment, and delayed care, sometimes for years. In my specialty, it's very important, and patient's clair is delayed for years. Terminology is not controversial, it's empowering. As a mother and physician, I urge you to pass it with anatomic terminology. Please help me help my patients.
Thank you.
I'm a parent of two MCS students. I'm also a licensed public health nurse. I have a master's degree in nursing education and a degree in social welfare, and I oversee health and mental health services at MJC.
Can you state your name for your record?
My name is Amy.
Thank you.
I can say confidently, this education is not harmful, it's protective. Our kids deserve this information. There is no credible evidence that comprehensive sexual education is harmful even in fifth grade. On the contrary, curriculum like puberty talk reduces bullying, supports child abuse prevention, improves self-esteem and self-protective skills. At MJC, I see what happens when young people grow up without early information about their bodies, boundaries, and relationships. So I urge you to rely on the science and expert consensus of health and mental health providers. Please pass this.
Can you please add one minute?
My name is Alina Ruiz.
Hold on, hold on one second. We're going to get you microphones.
My name is Alina Ruiz. I do not speak English. Of the studies that were never available in Spanish? Even though we represent more than half of the students in Modesto City Schools? When I went to review the materials, there wasn't even an interpreter available to support me. I felt excluded from the process as if though my voice and my role as a mother didn't mean anything. How are we to support and protect our children? If we do not have access to the information. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, you can go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Amber Shortledge. I'm a mom of two and an educator within Modesto City Schools. I am here to urge you to vote yes on puberty talks for grades five and six. Studies will show that comprehensive sex ed prevents and addresses and lowers the sexual abuse and molestation of young children. When we give our children the tools to identify what is happening and if something is consensual or non-consensual, just like I teach my first and second graders, they can say no to a hug, it's important to teach our young children who are in grades five that they, what they can say no to. When we give our kids the tools to identify consent, they're able to identify when it's non-consensual, and they're more likely to come to a trusted adult and say, this is what is happening to my body. Just like I tell my three-and-a-half-year-old when I was potty training him, I use the correct terminology. Excuse my language, because some people I think might find this offensive, but I never thought I'd have to utter the term "lower your penis" so much when I was potty training than when I trained him. Sorry. Please vote yes. It's important for our children to get this curriculum.
Thank you.
My name is Pearl. I'm here as a grandma. I have two, my daughters are grown, but I have two granddaughters that aren't that age yet, but I have a grandson who is 12, and he told me, Grandma, did my mom tell you that I'm bi? So what do you mean you're bi? Yeah, there's a little boy in my class, and I like him. And I said, that doesn't mean you're bi. I have a best friend that I hang out with, but that means I want to spend my time with her, it doesn't mean you're bi. He got the same curriculum that everybody else is getting, and he's autistic, and he thought he was bi. And it just, it's very, as a grandma, I don't know where this curriculum is going to go. I'm just worried for my granddaughters coming up, who's going to learn this too. And we also have a family member that just committed suicide at 18 years old. And it's just really hard because that person was able to take hormones to trans, to a different gender, and it was just, you know, you can't give kids hormones and expect it not to have a lasting effect on their bodies at about 16 years old. But vote no, please, for our kids.
My name is Russ Mann, and I'm here as a grandparent. Someone mentioned earlier that education is good, and I absolutely agree that education is good. But I want to remind the board that this education that you are proposing is not mandatory by the state of California for fifth-grade level. And according to the CHYA, all students in middle school and high school will receive this education. So let the fifth graders be kids for another year. If parents wanted to teach their kids this information earlier, I am all for that, but do it in your house and not force it onto other students. What about the teachers? I know there was a mention last time that there was no opt-out for teachers. So as a man, if I'm a teacher, to look at your son or your daughter in the eye and teach about masturbation is putting them in an uncomfortable situation. And if you want to go by numbers, 85% and roughly 65% today mentioned no on this curriculum.
Thank you.
Vote no.
My name is Samuel Bosshart, and I just, I had a three-minute speech, which, about my personal experience in sixth grade. I can't read that in the time. I will say that there are second-order consequences that happen with many things that are even uncontroversial. For example, antibiotics used to be prescribed a lot for health reasons, and eventually, drug-resistant superbugs evolved to jeopard, that now jeopardize surgery. Grocery bags were banned, the thin ones, and they were replaced with thick plastic or paper or cotton, and the problem is, people don't reuse them, and life cycle studies now show they have a worse environmental impact. These kids are going to, you know, talk to each other, so opt-out has limitations, and they're going to talk to kids of different grade levels. So it's awful to chip away at the innocence of a child, and thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, board. My name is Joao Campos. I'm a father of two. I'm also the chair of the Stanislaus Union Elementary School District Bond Oversight Committee. The slide sharing the other school districts is erroneous and deceiving. I contacted the Stanislaus Union School District Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum, Katie Peterson, about puberty talk and asked her, do you guys share this with curriculum to fifth graders? She said no. So I can't trust that slide, and that was the only school district listed in this county that said they're sharing this. So I ask you not to trust that information because that school district told me they're not sharing that with fifth graders. I have a nine-year-old, and it is mine and my wife's job to teach her about this material, not the school districts. Also, teaching 10-year-olds about blowjobs and anal sex is not science, it's sick. As staff mentioned, you are not required to do this. You don't have to do this. Vote no, or we'll vote you out.
Thank you. Can we get somebody over there, please? We have two more speakers. All right, so we can please make it through. Thank you very much. Go ahead.
My name is Priscilla, and I'm here as a concerned parent and also concerned for our future generations. Since 2011, California schools have embraced social-emotional learning, promising to support mental wellness and reduce risky behavior. Yet today, suicide is the third-leading cause of death among 10- to 12-year-olds. Since 2008, youth suicide has increased by 8% annually. From 2009 to 2019, mental health hospitalizations for ages 11 to 14 rose by 25%. Since 2016, suicide-related ER visits at children's hospitals have tripled. Look at the data. This curriculum isn't helping, it's failing. No 10-year-olds should be pressured to explore gender identity when they're still learning how to spell it. Stop pushing an agenda that asks them to question the foundation of their being when they are the most emotional and vulnerable. I remind you that you are elected to educate children, not confuse them. Thank you.
Sorry, this is really hard because today happens to be my dad's 63rd birthday, who's not here with me anymore, so. Sorry. Oh my goodness, I don't even need a microphone. Okay, here we go. Sorry. Okay. So my name is Ashley Ann Nicolich, my maiden name, also known as Mrs. Victoria or Coach Victoria. I was the first graduating class from James C. Enochs in June some day of 2009. That same day at my best friend's graduation party, I was added on Facebook by Dustin Bordro, a math teacher at Enochs who was maybe 24 to 25 years old. He invited me and my best friend over the following night after graduating, and yes, we were 18. He gave us copious amounts of alcohol, marijuana, and cocaine, and showed us his He gave us copious amounts of alcohol, marijuana, and cocaine, and showed us his gun. And after we were drugged, he raped us. Three months later, he shot himself in the head, and this is the first time I'm making this public because two years later, my dad took his life, and I walk by his mother every single year at the Out of the Darkness Walk to prevent and raise awareness, not promote. And I'm not done.
Thank you.
I'm not done.
I, I understand that. We gave everybody a minute.
I'm almost done. Can I finish? There's no one else. Can I finish, please? Can I please finish? There's not much. I'm not done.
I, I understand, but we all.
I am not done.
I understand, but we gave everybody a minute, so.
I'll just go on TikTok Live. It's fine.
Thank you.
With my huge platform.
Thank you. All right, thank you, everybody, for public comments. Okay, we are going to move to board comments and questions. Hold on one second. Give me a second here. All right, I'll entertain some comments or questions from the board. I also, I'll, I'll remain, I'll let the board talk. So we'll have a discussion here, and then we'll move to a vote. So are there any board members that would like to speak? All right, I have, I actually have a couple of questions. So, Mr. Rich, if you can answer these questions for me. So I went to another school district's website that offers puberty talk, and there were Spanish supports. Do we, does this curriculum have Spanish supports within it?
So I don't know the answer to that. Specifically, when we adopt a curriculum, it's, we, we teach the curriculum in English. In regards to the parent supports on that, I'll have to look into that.
Okay, these particular ones I saw did have Spanish slides, so they might have Spanish support. So look into that. Okay, that was, that was most of my questions about the curriculum itself. And if I have, oh, I did want to ask one more question. Special ed, do we, is there a certain, I guess a certain way we approach special ed with curriculum?
Yeah, we have a instructional coach who's working on modifying the materials, but still giving them access to ensure CHYA compliance.
Okay, perfect. I want to just make a comment, and we'll come back around. There are student, the, what was available for people to look at was teacher-facing material and student-facing material. So student-facing material was, is different than the teacher-facing material. Teacher-facing material had more information in it, just in case teachers needed more information or needed support. Is that true?
That is correct. That would be the truth for all curriculum.
For all curriculum, certainly, okay. Okay, Trustee Daly.
So because my, my question's the last time I was told are rhetorical, I'm just going to make comments today. The majority of the people in this boardroom I've met over the last three weeks. I've spoken to over 300 parents. And in reference to the eighth-grade curriculum, most of the parents don't actually know what's in that curriculum, which is the reason there wasn't very much opt-out. I want to quote a statement that's in the La Loma Middle School or Junior High. Wrong is wrong even if everyone's doing it. Right is right even if no one is doing it. I find it very interesting that, that there are people in the room today that believe that we don't want appropriate health curriculum for fifth grade. Absolutely. Puberty is important to learn, and appropriate health curriculum that is medically based, as CHYA states, is absolutely appropriate. However, when speaking to CBS 13, when I said masturbation, anal sex, oral sex, and blowjobs, which is in the curriculum, it was censored out. So it can't be shown on the news, but then we want to teach our 10-year and 11-year-olds that? How does that make sense?
So I just wanted clarification. Are, are those in the curriculum?
Those are, yes, those are.
Are, are they referencing the student-facing material?
Yes.
Okay.
So twice now, I've asked for a video to be played.
Thank you.
Twice now, I've asked for a video to be played in the board meeting that is recommended by the curriculum. And once I was told that it was not a question, it was a statement, and the second time I was completely ignored. I received no response. And then I have questions, so in, in one, I do have a question here because, yes, in one statement or in one PowerPoint, it says that the district's office, the district office attorney has clarified that gender identity is not required for grades lower than seventh grade, but then we've changed it and said it is required. So there's two different communications. One was on Friday, the 20th, and the other one, I'm not sure, was the date. So which is correct? It doesn't make sense.
So after we posted the, the report for tonight, or on Friday, we were contacted by several people in the community saying, hey, we think that's incorrect. So we reached back out to council today and verified that if we choose to teach the health curriculum to any grade, then we have to include the components of the California Healthy Youth Act. So that's what the law states. So the first slide was a little, was a misunderstanding of, yes, we don't have to teach it because it's optional for grades six and below. But to clarify that, we provided that extra slide tonight to say, but if we do choose to teach it, the California Healthy Youth Act requires those components.
The, the attorney also confirmed that parents can, in fact, opt out of the gender portion of the health curriculum, despite the fact that we've been continually told that they cannot opt out of just the gender portion. Is that correct?
That is correct. That's why we asked for that. That question came up at the June 9th board meeting, so we asked for that clarification from legal counsel.
So I want to remind everybody that we're elected to implement the will of the people, not our will. This is what makes the United States a constitutional republic. The overwhelming majority of the community is saying no to this curriculum. And if more knew what was actually in the curriculum, more would be here to say no as well. Allow the parents to teach this. Parents do not co-parent with the state or the district. Again, SE et al versus Gray was confirmed by the attorney that there is, they are working on precedents in order to allow children not only to opt out of the health curriculum gender portions, but in all aspects. We need to remove that. It's not science-based. We talked about CHYA saying that we are required to have medically accurate and objective information. That is not medically accurate. It is not science-based. CHYA began in 2016 in California, yet in California, the HIV rates and STI rates are going up, not down. So this is going on nine years that this has been enacted in the schools, and those are going up. And the audience is correct when the person said 43% of those new HIV cases are from Latin communities. 15% of the new HIV cases in California, this is not in the United States, are in the black community. The AMAZES website that is recommended by the curriculum will allow the students to access all videos. It will not just be age-appropriate videos for them. It doesn't require them to opt in with a age or a birth date and limit the access to which videos. It will allow them to see all of the videos that are on there, which is a real problem. There is, like, it's talked about the opt-out option. There is an opt-in option. Those places in the community who want to opt their children into this can, in fact, teach their children that through the community agencies. The school does not need to step in. It is not required in fifth grade. It doesn't need to be taught by the school. It needs to be taught by the parents. At this age, the identity of a child is extremely important, coming from the parents, not society at this point, the parents.
Check. Okay, thank you. Trustee Irvin.
Yes, I, I just wanted to get some clarifications or make some comments because it seemed to get some information. People bring in information to the, to the podium about the, the teacher-facing portion of it and confusing it with the student-facing portion of it, but it seems that it's been cleared up now. Also, in terms of, I know at the last meeting it was mentioned that there was no mental health professionals a part of the, the curriculum development for, for puberty talk, and that was not true. As I did my research and contacts, and that it was, that there were medical, mental health professionals that were leading in the development of the curriculum. And then I also reached out to two psychologists, two psychologists and one licensed marriage family counselor, therapist. And because my concern was about the age-appropriateness, and all three of them said that puberty talk was age-appropriate. And so I, I used that data as a, as a measuring tool to gauge where we should be moving towards in, in the curriculum. Also, in my background, with reading also the research and the data, and there were some who came up with data to enforce, reinforce, you know, that the curriculum fosters mental health literacy and emotional skills, builds resiliency during a turbulent, turbulent time, encourages safe emotional expression and dialogue, aligns with the interdisciplinary evidence-based approaches. And also, I had researched the S I E C U S to see whether this curriculum aligned to their standards, and it was the Sexuality Information and Education Council of the United States. It's one of the foremost national advocates for age-appropriate, medically accurate sexuality and puberty education, explicitly endorsing standards-based programs with emotionally supportive strategies. And, and that puberty talk curriculum seemed to align with that, based on that. And so, and talking to many parents, even students throughout the community, you know, I had even shared my, my cellphone, one cellphone number, and they were blowing it up. But it was important for me to really get a sense and understand what we were dealing with and, and these curriculums that we are pushing forward to adoption. I wanted to make sure that I was informed, not only from a community level, but from a research, from a data level, and from a personal level about what is best for our children at this age. And with the, the responses of the two psychologists and the, the therapist, you know, saying that, and then the, the data that was brought or mentioned from some of the community members, you know, it, it seems to say that we are within that realm. And so the other hard-line stuff, I didn't see that in the curriculum for the students. I saw it in the curriculum, in the facing for the, for the teachers as a way for them, the detailed information for teachers to be able to respond if they get questions or to have a more detailed knowledge of the curriculum. And so I just wanted to clarify that. Also, I wanted to, actually, it was some suggestions from people that I talked to about the curriculum. If it's adopted, if we could host a town hall for, for parents to get an understanding how the curriculum would be taught, what strategies would be used, and things of that, that, you know, things of that nature. And like I said, those things seem to be clarified now that have done that, that research. And then there was a one young lady, she mentioned about my son when he was in seventh grade, just like the psychologist said, because I brought that up to them, his instance. But he'd been out of junior high school for 15 years. And like they said, developmentally, kids change five, 10 years. I mean, the changes are different. Kids are more mature in their, in their knowledge now because of how they're exposed to social media, even in, in schools where things are done online, and they can get information, they can do research and things like that. So they are ahead in some instances, you know. And there was another comment about, you know, we don't teach the second grader or something, you know. But we do teach junior high and high schoolers two, three, two, three years ahead in math, science, and other subjects that they are shown promise in. And so nobody questions their, their developmental then. It's like, oh, they're smart, you know. Feed them, you know, so. And, you know, that's about it. That's all I wanted to put on that, and I'm gonna let it rest there.
Trustee Brown.
Thank you. I would like to first acknowledge all the people that are here in the audience today. I want you to know that we've been listening. We heard your passion. We heard your opinions. We have all been listening carefully and are going to make the best decisions that we can. I appreciate the fact that the questions that I asked at the previous meeting have been addressed. I was very concerned about the opt-out process and that we were told that it was only a choice for parents to opt out of the complete curriculum, but not to have the ability to select items that they wanted to have their children opt out for. So I, I'm shifting my direction towards a vote in favor of the curriculum because I feel strongly that it's important to have health matters taught to our children at earlier ages than we were comfortable receiving it when we were children. I, I've heard enough information that tells me that that's important. However, I know that there are strong feelings within our community about gender identity issues. And there are other issues that parents may selectively choose not to have their child a part of in, in the curriculum materials. I would ask the district to be very clear in the opt-out form whether they are choosing to opt out completely. But I also think that it's important with that opt-out form that that be given to all parents and list all of the items, all of the topics that are included in the course and allow selective opt-out for any of the items that they object to. I think it's important that we allow the parents to see the items that are in the curriculum and be aware of the things that they feel they need to specifically address with their children. So I think that the more we can educate our parents, the better off our children will be. And I, I strongly encourage us to be very explicit with the information that we provide with the opt-out option. I also would request that we have that same material for opt-out completely in both languages, English and Spanish, so that we don't leave anyone out of this question. The last thing I'd like to say is that we have spent a great deal of time and effort as a board on encouraging. as a board on encouraging student voice. I appreciate the fact that we've had some students of varying ages provide us their opinions and their feelings about the uh this curriculum question. Our children are learning, and they're learning to speak with their own voice, and we as a board are learning to listen and understand. And so I want to thank those students that have chosen to participate in this discussion as well. I want to thank each one of you for coming and expressing your feelings and allowing us to hear your concerns. We have heard them. Thank you very much.
Trustee Lopez.
So I I think that it was uh since uh trustee Marx, but I will say briefly, I just I just wanted, um, I echo the statements made by uh my fellow board members, uh especially trustee Brown around um the importance of this this conversation, the importance of these topics, and that they're not taken lightly. But also, in one key point, we we had a mother come here, um, and often, often we we talk about the availability of translation, not only in um in uh written form, but in ver- uh and and verbal. Um, I think we've been doing a great job in our in our verbal uh trans- uh translation and interpretation. Uh, and it's as as mentioned before, this is why we need those things, because in these matters, we need to hear everyone's voices, and if uh individuals are not coming or don't have the right, uh the adequate um, the adequate information in their language, uh which we know that even in in our, even in our own languages, is daunting, um, daunting wording, right? And so, uh, let alone if it's in a language that's not, that is foreign to you. So, um, I think that that's a great example of why we need to have um the our 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 forward-facing, uh, community-facing and parent-facing information in in both uh in the languages that we service here in in our in our uh in our district. One thing I did wanna make comment or make suggestion is that I would have liked, we talked about it last time, about the work that we will be doing uh around human trafficking information and partnering up with our local agencies. Um, I would, I would have wanted that already, those conversations are already happened, um, and I would definitely want that information available to parents. Who are we partnering up with once this uh this curriculum? Um, you know, because I think that this is a topic that, um, I know that in the committee was was highly talked about, and it was really important that it was come from a local uh context, and so I would, I would really like to have that em- embedded into the curriculum. Sorry for stepping in, but.
That that's okay, actually, it came up as Lopez, so trustee trustee Marx.
Well, after you spoke, my name came up as Marx.
Yeah.
So I was Lopez before, so thank you. I missed one meeting and my name's changed. So it's great to be here tonight. I'm sorry I missed last time. I so appreciated hearing, I watched the video of all of you that spoke that came last time and spoke again tonight. I appreciate all of the comments, both sides. I believe that as board members, we have to hear the whole story and hear from everyone to make wise decisions and be respectful of one another. So I have to say you were much more respectful last time than I could tell by the video, but I understand there was some booing, I didn't know that, so can't hear that on the internet. So, um, I wanted to, uh, as a, I was on the committee, and as a board member on the committee with trustee Lopez and trustee Daly, I appreciated the opportunity to serve in that way. And I, as we went through that, and I pulled up the slide that has the, um, it's called Topics Agreed on by the Committee. So I just, for the board members that weren't there, and you saw this, but for me, this meant the most to me as a, as a, um, listening to your comments and then also trying to make this decision tonight. We had these seven, four, five, seven topics. Hygiene was number one. I think the committee, that was our number one purpose in teaching in fifth grade, was hygiene and growth and development. So those are two things that we believe that were extremely important as we talk about puberty. And then we had nutrition, internet safety, which was human trafficking influences, self-esteem, body image, communication, consent, to me it was boundaries, and relationships, which also could um help students. When I looked at that, and then we looked at the curriculum that that we were presented with, and the one that was chosen, it did not focus on hygiene. It focused on sex education. Now granted, CHIA's main purpose is to focus on comprehensive sexual health and HIV prevention and STTs and all, well, STIs, sorry, they changed that years ago. So as I looked at this tonight, and I'm listening to what you said last time and what was said tonight, I realized for me, I really believe that we don't have to teach the gender identity. Now, I re-looked at. I looked at the information that the attorney sent us. Now, I have read this paragraph in CHIA like a gazillion times because I was reading it that, you know, in our meeting with the group, reading it over and over, and because it uses the word "may," I know we don't have to. So let me tell you what it is, because I had to go to the internet tonight because I forgot to bring a copy of it. It is, it's item C, uh, and I took it off my internet, but it's item C. It's in, um, it was effective January first, twenty twenty-five. It starts with this, I'm just gonna read this paragraph because it's the last statement that makes me say we don't have to teach it unless we teach comprehensive sexual education. So it says, "A school district may provide comprehensive sexual health education or HIV prevention education consisting of age-appropriate instruction earlier than grade seven." So I already talked about that and agree on that, "using instructors trained in the appropriate courses." A school district that elects to offer comprehensive sexual health education or HIV prevention education earlier than grade seven may provide age-appropriate and medically accurate information on any of the general topics contained in paragraph one to eleven, inclusive of subdivision A. So that's the whole thing before that that goes into the gender identity. And so when I read that, I believe that what it's saying is that we do not have to teach gender identity if we do not teach comprehensive sexual health education. That is not what the committee wanted. The committee did not say we want to teach comprehensive sexual ed- health education. Granted, that was a, I was added later, it isn't even on this slide to do that. So when I look at that, and I'm listening to tonight, and I'm thinking about this, I am realizing, I believe we could do this in a way that meets the needs of our students and gives them the information for hygiene, growth and development, puberty, without teaching comprehensive sexual education. Now, I believe that. As I'm looking at it, in order to do that, the only thing that this board would need to do is not vote for this puberty talk tonight, but to vote to have hygiene and growth and development taught or get a curriculum that just teaches that. We already have somebody free of charge, the sheriff's department will teach internet safety. The three other ops, the three other topics that were very dis- are very concerning to us were internet safety, are the um influences, communication and relationships, which, without permission, teaches. And so. Still, I asked about nutrition in the in the meeting, in the committee, and we came up with um that we already teach nutrition in our schools, we already are teaching that, so that wasn't actually needed because it's already embedded into our curriculum, which I appreciate that. So as I looked at this, and then I reread this, and then I reread what the attorney said, and I'm believing that the slide that you gave us on questions from June ninth about opting out of specific topics was written by the attorneys, but when I read the actual CHIA, granted, I'm not an attorney, but I've read a lot of this code, sec- uh, not sex ed, but the codes, all these ed codes over the years. I was just talking to the superintendent today that I used to pull out the books, there's like twenty-eight books on it, and when I would read an agenda item, I'd say, okay, what's the ed code say? So I went back to that because I feel like that's where I want my information. So I'm just asking the board, I know you've already stated your opinions, you've already said you've supported this. I believe opting out, I'm gonna just address that for a moment. It's very frustrating to me as board members who sit up here, who speak English, who read all this material, who have access to numerous things, who are representing the people, and then we tell you, oh, well, you may disagree with this, you can opt out. Well, they may not speak English, they may not read English, they may not be in a community that has access to this information. And so I'm making a decision, so I've always felt this way, opt out is a cop-out, because when I did this on books and movies, I was protecting students who had been in violent countries, who had come here from, as refugees, to be protected, and then we're exposing them to this horrible material, and I said, why are we doing this? Oh, we can opt them out, they can opt out. Like their parents even could read English. So to me, that's not an option in this situation, and granted, I wish every parent could know and understand this information so they could make an informed decision and opt out, but I don't believe that's the case. So my job as a board member, and I look at it this way, is to protect the innocent, to protect the children. In that, I want you as a board, I know you've already made a lot of research, you've looked into data, but I plead with you to reconsider your positions and consider the idea of making this. I just want to use the word, protect and purify our students. Those are just the words I want to use. But if we could teach them hygiene, growth and development through another curriculum, I believe we have the access to all of these other ones that would also agree to what the committee agreed on. Now, I'm not gonna go into why I think the committee voted the way it did and all that because I was frustrated with all of that in the process, but that's just my opinion. So I just want you as board members, who, especially those who weren't able to be on that committee, to listen, hear the public, hear us, and hear our hearts, because I don't believe that we're any of us, I don't believe any of you are here to harm our children. I don't believe you're here, you spoke up because you wanted to hurt our children. I just believe you have an opinion that is different than mine and different than what I believe is helpful for our students. So, um, with that, I'm going to make a motion. I couldn't get on here, and so now I'm gonna make a motion if I, if you allow me.
I'd like to make some more, I'd like to make some comments, and then I will entertain a motion, that's okay.
All right.
Thank you. I want to let you finish, though.
I believe that's all I wanted to say, so.
Okay.
Wait a minute, let me check my notes, hold on. I wrote notes, I'm sorry. Nope, that was it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I also want to say thank you to everybody for coming tonight. Um, I want to echo something that I heard this evening. Many of you know I'm a teacher, and uh I really appreciate the the passion and the desire to be a part of the educational process. I hope that many will consider that when we discuss, which we do often, discuss issues of mathematics and science and EL- ELA and um all of the, all of the other topics that we discuss that are so important to our kids, um, as as I also believe this issue is also important. But, um, clearly, there's a lot of passion for this issue, which I I really appreciate. Um, I hope that at some point there be a lot of passion for mathematics as well. But that's, you know, of course, I'm a little biased in that because I'm a math teacher. So, um, but I do want to appreciate many of you and uh the, um, mostly the poise and the respect that you gave um our speakers and the speakers this evening. Uh, I appreciate that because it makes, it makes it easier as a president uh to control, you know, to have a a meeting like this, but it also um lets everybody that watching and listening to understand uh why it's important to be respectful, as we know that there's so many other places that are not. So I thank you for that, um, everyone. Uh, I I do just want to echo a couple of things. I I I looked at the curriculum over and over again, and um I also, just as trustee Irvin, I I didn't see anything, um, I didn't see anything egregious that I wouldn't share with my daughter, who is in fourth, in fifth grade. So I had conversations with with all of them too, and uh it was really, it really is good to hear from students. Different students have different perspectives. I know that from teaching for so many, so many years, that uh we can have the same conversation as we have as adults with differing opinions, students have those differing opinions. And the important thing, just as we share respect in this room tonight, the important thing is that our kids grow up having that respect to understand that other people have differing opinions and differing thoughts and differing uh differing families, they grow up in different religions, and are respectful of that without bullying. And as I read through much of the curriculum, there was a a large emphasis on respect and understanding of other people. Not only that, but understanding that other people are different. And that, I think, was important, they come from different families, and it was very, you know, it was very fifth-grade-ish um in the, in the, in the discussion of that people are are different and they come from different families and different family structures. That being said, I I want to echo something also that trustee Marx talked about in um people that come from different areas. Uh, I think it's important to have this in multiple languages, if if it passes, to have it in English and in Spanish. I gave you the recommendation that I saw on the website of another school district that offers, this was interesting, that school district offers, uh, they do puberty, the wonder years for fourth grade, and then puberty talk for fifth grade, and then again, they do another one in uh eighth grade, and then, of course, the the high school one. I thought that, I found that kind of fascinating. But what was interesting is they had the slides in both English and Spanish. Uh, my recommendation is that if this passes, we have transparency in a way that is easily accessible for parents, as it was for me to go on the website to see the slides that are student-facing. I think that is um really important for parents to to have access, to understand what is in the curriculum so that they can make those decisions, and uh easy access to it through uh website is is one way. I like the idea of a town hall. Town halls in both English and Spanish, but also, to get back, we have a lot of refugees, we have a lot of people, we have a lot of Muslim community that may um be, feel, object, object to something as well. Um, I think that we need to have other languages available for people to make those decisions also. So my recommendation also is that there are, um, that it's available in other languages, and the communication is available in other languages. I know that we are in an age where that is not as difficult as it was even ten years ago. Um, I could ask ChatGPT and Gemini to translate something that I got from a student that was in Arabic to uh to English, and it translates it for me so I can understand her mathematics, and she can show me that her mathematics. So I think we have the capabilities of making sure all our parents can understand and be um and communicate with them. Lastly, um, I just also want to say that I did a lot of research over the last couple of weeks, um, looked a lot, looked at a lot of studies, looked at a lot of data, and that's gonna help me also inform my decision. So, um, those are just, just my thoughts, I think it's really important that we try to do the best that we can. And I just, the opt-out, opt-in, I just wanna, you know, we are, we're held by the state, right? And I just, the opt-out, opt-in, I just want to, you know, we are, we're held by the state, right? In that, there's an opt-out policy. By, by not having something, then we've basically created a situation where we've taken something away from a lot of people rather than allowing people to make a decision on their own. So I'm, I, I really don't like, I really don't like taking things away from people, especially their ability to make a decision. So that was, that's a really big, big thought in my mind as I make this, this decision. So that's pretty much all I have to say. And I will entertain a motion. Well, I think what I'm going to do is, I think we're going to go in, in a bit of an order, if that's okay. So.
In what?
In, I'm going to go with the order of, do I have, do I hear a motion to approve? And then if that doesn't pass, then we go on to the, to another one. Does that make sense?
You, I believe that the, so according to how we run board meetings.
Okay.
A board member may make a motion. It doesn't have to be to approve or disapprove. A board member can make a motion and form their own motion.
Okay.
Yeah, as long as they're recognized by the chair.
All right. Then I will entertain a motion.
Thank you. Thank you for your respect. So my motion is, I move that we have a new curriculum that is on hygiene and growth and development and a supplement by the community, these other items that the committee agreed upon. I can list them out if you want.
I'm writing this down.
Okay, it's on a tape, but yes.
Okay.
Because this was the committee's wishes. Though it came up with a curriculum that we were presented with, we didn't get very many options of curriculum to review. Now, I don't know if it'll pass, but I appreciate the opportunity for you to listen to me, to hear me, and to be willing to vote.
Okay, thank you. So. But I want to get the motion correct here. So the motion is for a new curriculum on hygiene and nutrition.
And growth, growth and development. Hygiene and growth and development.
Hygiene and growth and development.
Basically puberty, growth. That's what we talked about on the committee. Is that correct? You tell me, my board members that were on the committee. I don't know.
Is there any additional things to, to the motion? Motion for a new curriculum, hygiene and growth and development?
And to supplement.
And a supplement?
The other topics that the committee asked for through the community, the sheriff's department and without permission. They both have programs that are free of charge. That do internet safety. They do influences, self-esteem, body image with, without permission. Communication and consent. What does that mean to you as a person that's without permission? And relationships. They review all of that. Healthy relationships, unhealthy relationships.
Okay. All right, so I think I got this. So the motion is for a new curriculum on hygiene and growth and development and a supplement for the other topics on the committee list through the sheriff's department and without permission or, or similar community service, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so that's a motion by trustee Marks.
I second.
That's. That's a second by trustee Daly. All those in favor, raise your hand, it's, and say, state aye.
Aye. It's only two of us, but.
All those opposed signify by raising your hand and saying nay. Nay. So there's two ayes, trustee Daly and trustee, trustee, motion fails. Thank you. Okay. The two ayes, trustee Daly and trustee Marks, I have to state this right, okay? And five nays, trustee Brown, trustees Brown, Lopez, Irvin, Mejia, and Miestis.
So I'd like to make a new motion since that one failed.
Okay, new motion.
My motion is to vote no on puberty talks.
Okay.
And propose.
The motion is to vote no, the motion is to vote no on puberty talks.
Yes, it's to vote against the proposed curriculum.
There we go. The motion is to vote against.
So a yes vote means no.
Right, I'm going to get, we're going to get this straight. The proposed curriculum, which is puberty talks.
Yeah.
A yes vote would be against the curriculum. A no vote would just be no against that motion. Okay, so that is a motion by trustee Marks.
I second.
That is a second by. By trustee, my mic keeps shutting off. By trustee Daly. All those in favor of the motion to vote against the proposed puberty talks, raise your hand and say aye.
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 I count two ayes. Those that vote no to vote against the proposed puberty talk, please raise your hand and say nay. Nay. Was that a nay? Trustee Irvin? Okay, so any abstentions? Any abstentions? One? Okay.
If you abstain, you have to be able to explain why you abstain.
I'm abstaining because it, it just seems that there's, um, and I love Cindy Marks. That there's some type of trickery going in, that we're, we're not, I mean, we, we know, we know what we want. And it seems like there's a, there's a, there's, um, there is. There's, there's, it just seems like there's just trying to avoid the inevitable, you know? And I'm not, I'm not for that. The inevitable, we already know by the, just the reason just votes just now.
So.
You know?
So trustee, trustee Irvin, in order to abstain, you have to have a conflict, a, a conflict with the decision. So either it's a yes or a no. If it's abstention, it's because you have a conflict in the topic. Not a conflict, not a, a theoretical conflict. It's actually a, a conflict.
May I just explain why I did it that way?
Yes.
Okay. So first, I had something that wasn't, I had an idea that I thought maybe I had more support for. So I asked for that idea to be passed as a board. That failed. So then, I didn't know if people didn't, if you all didn't vote for it because you didn't like that idea. But maybe some of you were opposed to the puberty talks. So now I made a motion that hopefully I will get enough votes to pass that, to not have puberty talks. So that was the reason why I did it that way, was because I wanted to see if, because I didn't hear any other discussion, so I didn't know where you were at. So I had to ask again. So I asked it that way. So I wasn't doing it to trick you. I just was doing it because I was trying to find a way to get it to pass in a way that would help me and get what I wanted to.
Right, right. And I didn't mean to like trick you. I was just trying to find a word for it up here. But I'm just saying. I didn't want to use deceptive.
Right.
So, okay, I'll tell you what to know.
Okay, so, so all those in favor of, I got to re, I'm going to redo this so that we have the right votes. Those in favor of the motion, which is to vote against the proposed puberty talk, raise your hand and say aye. Two ayes. Trustee Marks and trustee Daly. Those voting no on the motion to vote against the proposed puberty talk, raise your hand and say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Five nays. Trustees Brown, Lopez, Irvin, Mejia, and Miestis. All right. Lopez.
Yeah. I wanted to call the motion the, the, the statement as it was written, but with the addition to add, to work with the sheriff's department without permission or like organizations to talk about the, the topic of internet safety and human trafficking.
Okay, so let me get this motion correct. This motion is for approval of the fifth grade health curriculum adoption for twenty-five, twenty-six, which is puberty talk with, with the addition of services by the sheriff's department or without permission or similar community organization on the topic of human trafficking.
And sa, and the internet safety.
And internet safety.
I think this reflects what the committee had, had, had also agreed to.
Okay. All right, so the motion is, so that we have it on the record. The motion is for the approval of the fifth grade health curriculum adoption for twenty-five, twenty-six, which is puberty talk with the addition of the sheriff's department or without permission or similar community organe, organization to supply the topics of human trafficking and internet safety. Okay. That's a motion by trustee Lopez.
I have a question of clarification before a second.
Okay, question and clarification.
So we've talked about the opt-out process. I would ask trustee Lopez if you're willing to add to your, your motion that opt-out would be available, including opting out of individual items. Is it there? Okay.
So that's already included. Regardless of what's in it, they can opt out of any lesson.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we are, are clear that, that that is part of our recommendation.
Yeah. Okay, so for clarity, parents can opt out of one or more or all of the whatever's adopted tonight. Okay. Did you have clarity too?
Yeah, I just have another question. That, the clarification for parents moving forward, then they can also opt out of the eighth grade? Any of the subjects in the eighth grade curriculum as well, or high school?
That, so that, that doesn't pertain to this one, but I think that question can be answered by Mr. Rich at another time, if that's okay, after we go through the vote. Because, but that's a, a good question that we'll need clarification for. Okay. All right, so I hear a motion by trustee Lopez. And I think I heard a second from Vice President Mejia. All those in favor of that motion to approve the fifth grade health curriculum adoption for twenty-five, twenty-six, which was puberty talk with the addition of the contracting with the sheriff's department or without permission or similar community organization to provide information on human tra, lessons on human trafficking and internet safety, raise your, raise your hand and say aye. Aye.
Aye.
I hear five ayes. Trustees Brown, Irvin, Lopez, Mejia, Miestis. All those opposed signify by raising your hand and stating nay. Nay. See two nays. Trustees Marks and trustee Daly. Motion passes five to two. Once again, I want to thank everybody for your civic engagement tonight and for your respect and your willingness to stick, to stay and be part of this process. We appreciate all that you do. You're welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting. But we'll take a short recess. We'll go five-minute recess. Hold that. Are we ready? Yeah, okay. All right, well, thank you for those that are here that have, uh, stuck around through, through all of that. We'll get along, get going with the rest of our meeting here, and, uh, we're gonna move to the period for public presentations. I've got some cards. All right, so, um, these are public presentations that are not on the agenda, and thank you for attending tonight's board meeting. I have four cards this evening, so I'll ask each speaker to come to the podium and address the board and state your name for the record, you'll have three minutes to speak, and an additional minute will be added if you need translation services. So, um, again, uh, make sure that, I just wanna reiterate that these are four comments that are not on the agenda this evening. Okay, so we will start with, uh, Dr. Eric N. Haley. Doctor, it says Dr. Eric. Oh, he spoke. Okay. All right. Looked for, okay, so we'll go on if he comes back then. David Sandoval. I think that was in the last one too. Okay. Celia Gonzalez McCoy. She's right here.
Hello, um, I'll wait for my timer to start, so my name is Celia. Um, I am currently a student assistant specialist through Center for Human Services, as well as, uh, substitute teacher within the district. Um, and I wanted to address, um, part of the budget that was, um, brought up last meeting, um, in regards to the AB two-eighteen. Um, I was curious, why are we gonna be paying almost eight-hundred thousand dollars for one school year, um, in regards to sexual abuse claims, is this just based off of the number of employees that are, um, hired within the district? Or is this based on viewing what Modesto City School has had sexual abuse claims against them? Um, and so I guess that's an open-ended question, because this is commentary, right? Um, but my concern is, why is it so much?
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, I just noticed this is on the agenda, it is, yeah, it is, um, it is D-five on the approval of budget.
Oh, so it was not approved the last meeting? My understanding, I thought it was approved, so this was a thirty days set out to be voted on today, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the budget wasn't approved last meeting, correct? Okay, so it will be on the agenda coming up.
Okay.
So if you want.
Well, I will retract.
Yeah, if you can just stay here and then come when it comes, thank you.
I will definitely say, thank you.
Demetria Montez.
Hello, Board, my name is Demetria Montez. Um, I just wanted to come up here and just remind you that I'm still here, employee two-four-three-four-four. Um, I was here on May twelfth, um, pleading to come to be reinstated. I just wanna come up here and thank you, um, especially Ms. Daly for responding back to me, because I believe I sent you guys all an email, ex- expressing my background to you and why I'm so committed. I hope that you guys had an actual chance to read that. But I just wanna come up here and kinda share a little bit of the experience that I have been trying to get back on board. Um, first off, I wanna give thanks to Ms. Gill, she has been helpful as into reaching out to schools to be able to get, um, try to set me up with interviews. But I just wanna let you guys know that I have applied for thirteen positions, that's how eager I am to stay on board. Uh, maybe one of them was, um, something that I found out I wasn't eligible for. But the biggest challenge that has been is that since I've been, since I was notified, I did venture off into doing subbing work in other districts. And some of the challenges that I've had is when I did get those phone calls back from certain school sites, I was told that they weren't able to accommodate me for the time. Example, just like today, I got a call for a job interview, was told it was for ten forty-five this Friday. I explained to them that I'm a dedicated, committed, and dependable individual, and I've already committed myself to another job site. Is there any way that you can make it for three, since I'm off at two-thirty, giving me a thirty-minute window to get to you, but that's what I'll do for you, and I was denied. Um, so it's very challenging to try to stay on board, but then be still, be treated as a person that's walking off the streets, where you have an individual, like I said before, but then exceeds evaluation, that's dedicated to their job, dedicated to the students, and basically it's my giving back for my thirty years of management. So I just wanna let you guys know what the status is with me, and I'm still pleading for help. I, you can talk to all my recommendations, I'm just asking for help, I truly wanna be part of this district. So if, if there's any way, if there's any teachers still out there that need some help, or principal, or anything like that, I really wanna stay on board, so thank you for your time, and I appreciate you guys.
Thank you so much. Um, again, although we cannot engage in discussion or take formal action on items not on the agenda, we thank you for the, following the protocol and addressing the board this evening, um, and taking your time to share your views. Uh, one more time, I just wanna make sure we didn't miss, um, David Sandoval or Dr. Eric Haley. Okay. All right, so, uh, we're gonna move on to board reports, do we have any board members who'd like to share a report? Trustee Marks.
Since I missed the last meeting, I wasn't able to share with you all the fun stuff that I did before I, before we got, before I left on my trip. So, I went to, and a few of you were at the Downey groundbreaking for the Athletic and Science Labs and Byer, that was really cool to see the science classrooms that they're gonna modernize at Byer too in the afternoon, a few of us were at that. And I got to go, so Gregori invited me to the Medical Science Senior Presentation. So the seniors get up, about fifty of them, and they share their, um, experiences in the medical field. It was fascinating, they work in ER, they work in the hospitals, they actually took care of people that died. It was quite the experience to hear their stories, and they share why they're gonna go into the new medical field that they've chosen, and most of it depended on kind of the experiences that they had in that, um, in that time. So that was really, I'd never seen that before, so it was really fun for me. I went to the parent celebration that Madey Harari organized at the Peterson Event Center, Dr. Naguchi, I think, was there as well, and we handed out, um, certificates to the parents, lots and lots of parents, it was great. It was a very special night, uh, many of us went to the retirement dinner, and I attended the Delegate Assembly in Sacramento, and that was helpful to hear kind of the budget, where we were headed and where we are now with the budget, which we'll get another update tonight, and did the Ethnic Studies Guidance Council. But I have to say, the highlight, besides the science presentation, and the retirement dinner, which was very special to have that come back, because I've missed it for a long time. I've just, was disappointed when our budget cuts cut that out, and our teachers missed it and staff missed it, was the job shadowing with CSEA. So I got to job shadow Tamara Garrett at Martone School, she was incredible. She met every student as they came to school, she knew their names, she talked to them, she met the parents, she moved kids that were struggling from one place to another, it was an awesome experience. She had more energy, I could not believe it, for the entire morning, and so I just, I thank our classified staff for all the hard work that you do, and it was really fun to be able to participate in that, I've never done that either before. So it was fun to have a couple of new things to share, so that's it.
Very cool, thank you. Trustee Irvin.
Well, I wanted to, um, I recently, and, uh, attended, um, uh, so, um, kids from Modesto School, three, um, six of them are part of, uh, Project Uplift Mentoring Program, which I'm a mentor in. Um, they attended a three-day, um, three-day STEM camp, and, uh, with the San Joaquin Office of Education, um, out there in Manteca, where they got a chance to learn a lot of great hands-on science, um, experiments, forensics, dissecting, um, uh, mixing of, uh, uh, enzymes and all of that good stuff. And, uh, they learned about mushrooms, how, I didn't know mushrooms, uh, actually, some mushrooms prevent trees, they grow near trees, but actually prevent trees from getting diseases. And they feed off the, you know, the soil and around the trees, but they prevent the trees from getting diseases because of, um, their enzymes, and so the, the trees like them because they prevent the trees from getting diseases. So there's a lot of different, uh, things that they learn. Yes, mhm, biotic relationships, so, um, it was good to, uh, learn on the last day I participated in the, all day, the, the last day of class, and, and it was about thirty, uh, students, um, from various different schools and stuff, and, um, we were the only ones that had students from Modesto City Schools, or our county in general. And so, um, it was good to, to see our students being exposed to things like that, to make sure that brain drain don't stop, you know, that, that it does stop during the summer, that they're engaged in fun and creative learning activities to keep the mind going, so, good. That's all.
All right, thank you, Trustee Irvin, um, I just have, I have one thing, um, I attended, and there's not a lot of stuff going on right now, but there was a MS CIFA meeting that was really important, because we had a vote on a new CFD, I believe. So, um, we've got new housing developments that are now gonna be part of some of the CFDs that we have, which are gonna bring us more, um, more, uh, bond, uh, money to, uh, use for bonds um, in our, um, Modesto City Schools and, um, Sylvan Unified, so, um, it was good. It was good to hear about all the new housing developments that are coming out, so that's, that's something I did this week. Okay.
I have a question for you.
Yeah.
So is Sylvan building more schools?
I believe that we have, the CIFA has, uh, fifty percent, um, for a new school, but right now, there's, for a middle school, right, but, um, right now they're not building a new school. However, in the Tivoli neighborhood over by Trustee Brown, right above, right north of Sylvan,
Yes.
Right by Enoch's, there is Sylvan property for a new school within that development. Um, there, there are no plans right now, but, uh, it could be down the line that they'll need to build a new school, because there's a lot more, there could be a lot more kids.
I was just wondering, because CIFA, Sylvan asked us to vote to not keep their, save their nine million dollars that they had saved to build a school, so about ten years ago they chose not to do that, so we voted to, um, give up the nine million, so, I was, you were, you were on your board, but you weren't on the CIFA board, and so it was a very interesting decision back then.
Yeah, I do know that, um, Stanis- Stan Union is, um, looking to build fifty percent, right? They're building fifty percent of a, uh, new school, um, because they, they really need it. So they did ask for funds, and we approved those funds in the previous meeting.
Yeah, they're rebuilding structures.
Okay. Trustee Brown.
Just to clarify, when I was, uh, on the Sylvan Board, they purchased land in Tivoli with the anticipation of someday building an elementary school. They still own that property, there's been some shifts as to, uh, layout and placement, and, but the intent still remains to build an elementary school within the Tivoli neighborhood.
Yeah, it's exciting, we might have, I mean, there could be more, uh, an enrollment jump if we see the, all of the houses being built out in Claus, out in Tivoli, um, the new development on Oakdale and Floyd, um, and then Crossroads West, um, out in Riverbank. All of those are within this, um, Modesto City Schools, at least for the secondary, for the high school, high school. Okay. So we'll move on to our next item, which is, uh, our time for special recognitions, and we do have, uh, we had one that was the video, but we have a very special second recognition this evening. And we have to say goodbye to, um, our superintendent, Dr. Sarah Naguchi, as this is her last board meeting, and she gets to go off and enjoy her retirement. So we're very happy for you. I just, I wanna say a few words about, uh, not only, uh, the experience- I just, I want to say a few words about, uh, not only, uh, the experience that I've had with you on this board, um, but just the, the impact over seven years as, uh, Modesto City School Superintendent. So I, I think I mentioned this, when I, when my kids were, seven years ago, my kids were, my boys were in elementary school, my daughter, um, hadn't gotten to kinder yet. And I remember hearing, oh, there's a new superintendent. And at that time, you know, I'm so caught up in my own work as a, a, a math teacher over in series and I'm like, okay, yeah, I wasn't really thinking about, I wasn't watching the board meetings, I wasn't doing any of that back then because I was so involved in my classroom. But I remember hearing that, um, our, our new, um, superintendent, um, Dr. Sarah Noguchi. And I remember hearing about you and, um, the things that, uh, your vision at that time. Um, oh, look at that, there's some memory, down memory lane right there. And I remember the vision that you had. Because I, I, even though I didn't know you and only the, the name, I remember the vision because as a teacher, that, and as a parent, that was the most important thing to me was what was the vision coming in? Because I knew that, um, there were things I wanted for my kids. And I remember thinking, this is gonna be great. Like, my kids are going to flourish because there's someone that's going to do the things that I think we really need in our district. And then comes things that I, I thought, wow, some structures that were just amazing. CIPD, brand new, new place. And that was, that's close to my heart because I'm a coach. And, uh, I think that the better teachers can become through professional development, um, the better our students will be. So then there's MTSS, strengthening those kids that need tier one, tier two support right away. As things occurred, as my kids went on, and I thought, God, this is such, I want to be part of this more. I want to be part of this more because the superintendent, I feel, is doing such a great, just putting so many great things in place, so many great things in place. And then I ran for school board. And, um, I was lucky to get on school board and to have the opportunity over the last five or six years to work with you as a board member and as a superintendent. And I have to tell, as, as a professional and as leader, you are amazing and outstanding at your job. As a person, you're even better than that. And I have, I have, um, really appreciated all of the times that we've got to talk, all the times, um, that we've gotten to, to know each other, all of the perspective and education that we got to talk about. Some of them we disagreed on, uh-huh, some of it we agreed on. Uh, but being able to have that conversation is what I think has helped all of us become a stronger board, is to be able to have conversations that we know we disagree, which was clear tonight, but we can, we can respect and talk about those things and have discourse. Um, and I, I appreciated that. I just want to highlight a couple of other things that, um, I and I think my kids are ever, and some other kids in this district are gonna be ever grateful for, co-teaching. Um, I'm gonna point that out because I know that that was a disagreement between you and I in the very beginning. And, um, through, through a lot of work, we came with something that is working for our kids. And every day I try to move that to more places because so many kids are being positively impacted in mathematics and seeing success all the way through because of the, the conversation that we were able to have. Your, your history is gonna be here on so many buildings, so many structures, so many lunchrooms that are gonna be built here, so many fields, um, there are gonna be, students are gonna feel your positive impact from years, for years and years to come. And I think everybody, I know, I don't speak for everybody, but at least for myself, my kids are getting to feel that positive impact. I appreciate everything you've done. I appreciate all your years of service and I appreciate, um, I appreciate you. So thank you for all that you've done for us. Um, I'm gonna open the mic up to other board members now to make their remarks. Vice President Mejia.
Uh, I'm, I'm, I am gonna be brief, Sarah, just because we, we have talked, uh, so much and, uh, and actually, I didn't even know, uh, I, I became a board member and you were my, my first superintendent, so I, I just thought like, things were like, that's the way it's supposed to be. But I've kind of asked people around and that's not usually the case. So I just remember our first conversation, and I don't think you remember me because I was at, at the listening session, you had a handshake. We didn't even know, we, we didn't know each other. Uh, I know by you just doing that, that kind of set a precedent of like, what kind of a superintendent you were gonna be. I think you were doing like several listening sessions and I happened to be at the handshake one as you were, as you were doing that. That's my first interaction, uh, with you. So I just want to say, um, thank you for, for the training, for bringing me along at the beginning of this, but also I got to see that your convictions and what you drive, your vision and all that stuff was just you. You breathed that and it was just, uh, so for me, it was, it's just been an awesome experience. Even when we disagree on different things, you were, you're, I always, I can trust that you're gonna tell me the honesty regardless if you, if, if, if you were gonna agree with me or not. But I just, I'm thankful, I can mention a bunch of stuff that I've seen over the, over the last five years, but I know the, the department, the, the English learner and all the stuff you have done there. I mean, that's, that was very close to my heart, all the stuff you've done with parents. I mean, it's just, I can go on and on, but I just want to say, we all deserve retirement. Thank you so much. Enjoy your next stage. Um, you deserve it and, and thank you for, for the, the leader and the example you kind of set forth for, for our community and for other, other superintendents in, in our area as well. So just thank you so much and I'm eternally grateful.
Trustee Urban.
Dr. Noguchi. Man, we go back to the beginning of your, your tenure. I think I was having my, my interviews at your first board meeting, if I'm not mistaken. Yes, of being appointed. And so that was my first introduction. And, and from the very first time we had our first one-on-one, um, I had, um, great admiration and respect, um, by just getting to know you in that setting. But over the years, uh, we too have, uh, had some butted heads and disagreements and stuff, but it was always respectful, it was always, uh, from the heart. And, um, and we left, um, both understanding that, um, it's, it's okay to disagree. It's okay to disagree and, and then keep it moving, you know? And so, but in that, in your seven-plus years, I can say I have grown tremendously as a board member. I've learned a lot from you. I've, you know, I've gleaned, um, from that doctoral noggin over there. And I've, uh, uh, appreciated, you have shared some things, you know? So making me a more confident and a more, um, um, a more, um, I want to say educated, uh, board member, a more, um, passionate board member, um, understanding what, uh, board members, um, you know, helping me understand my role as a board member. And that's based from your experience, you know, and, uh, your knowledge. So I appreciate that. And I also appreciate times when you, you've checked me, you know? And I'm like, oh, okay, alright, Sarah, you know, alright. And so that's appreciation as well. Um, like I said, that's that tenacity that you bring with your leadership, you know? And so, and it's always in, in, in respect, you know? Um, so, um, like I said, I know you're, you're getting ready to get on that horse and, um, and, uh, spend a lot of time with your grandchildren and probably gonna see the world and, and, and prepare a mental block. I don't know if you're gonna do that surgically or you're just gonna do that internally of, uh, of us all here in Modesto when you ride off. But again, your time and your, and you know, I wouldn't say that, your, you know, your, your friendship, you know, in a, in a sense, um, has been well-valued, you know, well-appreciated. And I, and I hope it continues beyond, beyond this, that you continue to be a resource at times, you know, or, you know, something to bounce off, bounce off ahead. So thank you again.
Trust, Trustee Marks.
Yes. Well, I got to be on the selection committee with three of us that are still here, so that was pretty amazing. And I just want to say that you hit the ground running. I, you said I'm, because you had some health issues and health challenges, the short hair reminded me of it. I was like, oh, I mean, I had that already in my notes, but it was neat to see you with short hair because I'd forgotten that. And just that you, you kept saying, just wait, I'm not hundred percent, just wait, to the staff. And I know when you got going, you just brought everybody along together. You changed the culture here, which was a huge lift to change. And that's what we wanted you to do, was to help bring people together, to help them make better decisions. You created confidence in our staff so they could make better decisions and bring them to you. And I really got to know you in 2020 because I was president that year and 2020 hit. And we were on the phone, I think, every day, two or three times a day because everything changed. State, county and federal government didn't agree and that was an amazing year, but we had to make a lot of tough decisions right away. So I appreciated that time I had with you to be able to work through some of those difficult decisions. And it showed me you were a leader in our community because the decisions that you were making were affecting the other schools around us in Stanislaus County. You set the precedent for what are we gonna do? Now what are we gonna do? And each time you'd go to a meeting, they'd come back and tell me, oh, well, Modesto City Schools is doing it this way. So everybody kind of had to follow us. So I appreciate that. And then, um, you helped, um, and you created, you had so many innovative ideas. Um, I liked the MVA at the time because you, I mean, you created that idea and you wanted to bring more students back into our schools and that helped. And then to all of me, you did so much. And then, um, just like John said, I was like, yeah, we had our disagreements and yet you still, you know, we could still respect each other after that. We had different ideas and different ways of looking at things and you always had a good way of, um, just of still respecting one another after, after we disagreed. And I think in that you built good relationships with the board, you built a good board team. I mean, that was incredible to me. I hadn't, I worked with a few superintendents and that was, to me, the highlight of these years was that you helped us all work together, even though we disagree with each other, we can still work together. So I appreciate that. And I, I just wanted to say that I wish you all the best in your next venture and spending time with your kids and your grandkids and just the fun that you're gonna have. And you won't have any more board meetings like this to deal with than the last one because they're stressful. They're stressful for all of us. So I appreciate that, um, you're gonna have fun in the next, in the next venture. So appreciated working with you. These, I'm so, it's been really good.
Trustee Lopez.
I'll, I'll let, um, trustee double oh seven finish up, but, or, because I think we're eyeing to see who was next, but, um, I've gotten, I've gotten the distinct honor to be here since your day one. As, as the newest, uh, one that was there for you, um, and to be here today, um, even though however hard it is, because I mentioned it to you, it is hard. I'm so honored that I got to, uh, be a part of the great work that this district has seen under your leadership. You know what, what my community means to me and the effort that we've been able to accomplish, um, has been tremendous. It's been, um, not many times you get to see it physically, uh, physical representation. And I get to see that day in and day out as I go, as I go and come from our community. The work that you've done around, around, um, changing the culture in this, in this district, really being about, uh, one thing which has been big for me is that our district doesn't end at the, at the, at the school gates. We're an extension of community. And in some cases, we could, on our, be the community hub. You really took that to ownership and so coming in, um, coming into this community and, and owning that and, and, and really making that a center focus. It's words I can't, I, I can sit here and try to come up, but I just, just end up with appreciation. So, um, thank you for all that you've done. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your, uh, for your friendship. And thank you for being, um, a mentor, um, as a professional. And getting to, uh, grow in this space, um, alongside with you, so.
Trustee Brown.
No crying. Okay, I'm gonna talk and you don't get to cry either. So, uh, Sarah, I want you to know that you will not be forgotten. And you have helped each one of us become a better version of who we are. And I think I speak for not just the board or cabinet, but I think every employee in the district must feel the same. You have, uh, set expectations for us. You've encouraged us. You've recognized us and you've shown gratitude and appreciation for the efforts that have been given because you've shown us how. We've talked before about the legacy that will be your memory here in Modesto City Schools. You will not be forgotten. You look at the facilities, what we've been able to accomplish with the bond measures, the improvements that we've made on every single campus in the district. And I think that, uh, people will recognize and appreciate what those improvements have done to every piece of property within our district. Your efforts with the team and the teamwork have helped to improve property values for every, every home within Modesto City Schools. We look at the educational advancements that have been made, so much that we don't have time to go through all, all of them. But thank you for guiding us through so much progress. You guided us through COVID, helped us do things that nobody thought would be possible. You've helped us, uh, just feel possibilities when the world was telling us there weren't any. Yes, there's still challenges that we're working through as a result of that, but, uh, we're on a good track because of the guidance that you provided. You helped us, uh, recognize the need for sustainability and through that, we are nationally known for the things that we've accomplished. We're on the map. We've become the destination district and we've become a place that people are happy and proud to work for. Uh, our graduation rates have improved. We are helping our students become better than they knew they were. You have been an amazing leader. You've been a mentor to all of us. You've taught us what it means to be a governance team and how to work together. Because of your guidance, we're going to be able to continue that and we thank you for that. And last but not least, um, I want to thank you for becoming a forever friend. And I mentioned in our one-on-one that I'm invited- And I mentioned in our one-on-one that I'm inviting you to join Cheryl and me for a ski trip. Join us in our cabin in Utah, and you say it's been many years since you've skied? You said you were afraid of getting hurt. I know your strength. You'll bounce back and remember exactly what it is to ski, and we'll, we'll help you through that. But I look forward to nurturing the friendship that we have. And last of all, I just want you to know how much you are loved and appreciated for all that you've done. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to might any final?
Just a few, I'm just going to say a few words. First off, thank you all for your kind words. We've come a long way as a district, as a team, the team that, that is here and the community that is here, that was here. It's not the district that I, the district today is very different than the district I inherited seven years ago. But what I've said all along, you can't do the work of this job because it's 24/7, every day, all the time. People ask me, "What are you going to do when you retire?" My big thing is I'm going to turn off my phone for two days. I've never turned off my phone because you can't turn off your phone because you always have to be ready. And you guys know, when you text me, I text you back, right? But I say that because it takes a strong governance team, working together, to make the changes in the classroom. We talk about facilities, which is essential, which is part of the bond, but the real work is in the classroom with the teachers and the principals and the parents. And you guys will see, one thing that you will inherit in September is better data than we had last year on all the different metrics. And so better graduation dropout, you know, dual enrollment, AP, you name it. It's, it's there, and it's a great way to leave being even higher than we were last year. That wouldn't have happened if we had a board that wasn't functional. So like always, I give a little lecture. It's important to stay together as a team and for the board president to lead that team. And I have all confidence that the seven of you will continue the great work that we've been doing as we move forward. And also, it's a big shout out to my team, my direct team, although I have many teams. Cabinet, I couldn't have done what I've done if Cabinet didn't put up with me because you guys know, I've heard the word tenacious, but you all know it's more than that. I'm a, I'm a force to be reckoned with when I want something, so, but it works, right? So I want to thank you all, and you guys have my phone number, and I'm not going anywhere. So feel free to reach out, and I will take you up on that ski trip. And the medical bills, it'll come behind when I break a leg.
Yeah. Go ahead. Yes.
Thank you, thank you. Well, I, I have always wanted to come to this last board meeting. Didn't know that it would have so much going on at the beginning, but present members of the board, I read a quote a couple of minutes ago that I found on my phone, has to do with leadership, and it says, "Leadership is about making others better as a result of your presence and making sure that the impact lasts in your absence." You have been amazing from, from the day you came, and I, I know that every student matters to you, and you've brought the best out in others. On behalf of AXA, and of course, she was our most outstanding administrator of five counties in Region 7 AXA. Been such a pleasure to work with you and to get to know you in the way that I have too. So I've enjoyed being here with you, and I don't want to see you leave. You know that. But happiness in the next chapter and all that you do. You're just marvelous. Thank you so much.
That was Mary Ann Sanders for the record. All right, so thank you. Lastly, I'll, Dr. Noguchi, have you join me down on the floor for a special presentation and quick photo? You know what? Let's get it, everyone. Come on. All right, as we go through the rest of the meeting, so she can ride off into the suns, well, the sunset's been gone for a little bit here, right off into the night. We'll go on to our MTA report, so do we have a report from MTA? Yes, we do.
Be brief to make sure we don't see the sunrise. Board presidents, trustees, superintendent Noguchi, and cabinet in Modesto community. Good evening. My name is Chris Peterson, proud president of Modesto Teachers Association. On behalf of the association, I wish to publicly recognize and thank all the committee volunteers who worked on the fifth grade health curriculum, to all the educators, parents, trustees, who invested additional time and effort to keep students at the focus of the policy debate. I believe to my core, committee participants evaluated the information to advance public policy. Students first, not politics. We thank the committee and their recommendations and their work on this very important subject for our community and students. Again, tonight, we face many important topics to close 2425 school year. Let's continue to do the work that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Do we have a representative from CSCA?
Good evening, president, trustees, superintendent, and members of cabinet. My name is Armando Arvizo. I serve as the second vice president of California School Employees Association, Modesto Chapter 007, proudly representing more than 2,000 classified professionals across Modesto City Schools. I'm pleased to be able to provide this report on recent activities and ongoing engagement of the California School Employees Association, work that reflects our members' dedication to this district and the students we serve. Over the past year, we've seen a significant increase in members' engagement. We welcomed 385 new members into the Victory Club, and our chapter was once again recognized as the number one chapter in the state of California for the third year in a row, in our fourth time receiving this honor. Victory Club is a voluntary member program that supports education-focused advocacy and helps elect pro-public education leaders at the local and state level. This growth not only reflects a workforce that is not only essential, but also informed, invested, and actively engaged in shaping the future of our schools and community. Over the course of the year, our union stewards supported members through 189 individual cases. Each case represents a situation where a classified employee sought clarity, guidance, or advocacy. These are not just numbers. They are real moments of need that speak to the importance of strong labor relations and responsive support systems. They also illustrate the role of the California School Employees Association plays in helping maintain consistency, professionalism, and accountability throughout the district. Next month, we will send 14 delegates to the California School Employees Association annual conference in Reno. There, they will join over 2,000 colleagues from across the state for professional development, statewide governance, and networking opportunities, bringing valuable skills and insight back to Modesto City Schools. As we continue to build on that engagement, we hope to see the same level of thoughtfulness reflected in the way major district decisions are presented and discussed. One suggestion we'd like to offer is to consider scheduling budget presentations earlier in board meeting agendas. With such a large and impactful budget, apologize, especially for our classified professionals, allowing more time for review and discussion could foster even stronger transparency and collaboration. We offer this in the spirit of partnership and with the same care and preparation our members bring to their work every day. We believe the California School Association, our partners in Modesto Teachers Association, and district leadership, each represent essential parts of a strong unified core that supports the success of Modesto City Schools. Our roles may differ, but our commitment is shared to serve students, strengthen our systems, and build a future worthy of our community. We look forward to continued collaboration and meaningful progress in the year ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. That'll move us on to D3, our report on local performance indicators. Mr. Hurst.
Oh, do you need glasses? Good evening, President Mastis, board members, Dr. Noguchi, cabinet, and members of the community. My name is Steve Hurst. I'm director of state and federal. I'm here today to present on the local control indicators. Presentation?
You, you can just go ahead, and we'll get the presentation up.
So the purpose of the presentation is to provide the Modesto City Schools Board of Education with the required annual update of the local performance indicators as it will be reported on the California School Dashboard. The local indicators measure district progress towards LCFF priorities. Again, this relates specifically to our collective Y, which is our Modesto City Schools vision, which really is how do these support our students as they gain skills, knowledge, and the character traits to thrive and be productive members of our community. Also, this aligns to all of the district goals, one through five, as the Modesto strategic goals affect every single one of the local indicators that the state has. California has identified eight priorities, and as part of the LCAP adoption, districts are required to report their progress on the following indicators: priority 1, 2, 3, 6, and 7. These deal with basic services, implementation of state standards, parent engagement, school climate, and the access to a broad course of study. For each applicable indicator, the district must assign one of three performance categories: met, not met, or not met for two or more years. So starting with priority number one, which is basic services, this looks at how are teachers assigned appropriately? This is now based on a report from the state known as the Teacher Assignment, Monitoring, and Outcomes Report, or the TAMO report, and is based on the most currently available data, which is currently for the 2223 school year as we speak today. They have not put out the next year at this time. It also looks at access to curriculum-aligned instructional materials for our students. It looks at safe, clean, and functional school facilities. These are also all reported on the school accountability report card known as the SARC. I'm pleased to report that Modesto City Schools has met this priority. Priority number two, which is the implementation of state standards. This is from a state-supplied rubric. We use it to measure our success in implementing the aligned curriculum. There is an attached report to this presentation that you can refer to. Ratings are for ELA, ELD, math, science, history, social science, as well as CTE, health, PE, VAPA, and world language. Again, I report that we have met all of those priorities. Parent engagement, which is priority number three, is a measurement, again, using the state rubric. We administered our parent engagement survey and utilized that information to inform decisions made for the LCAP, as well as our outreach services. Our parent engagement outreach department has held multiple meetings and the trainings throughout this year on a variety of topics. They have hosted the Parents Make a Difference program and informationally meetings, as well as supported the sites in their parent engagement activities. The Parent Ambassador Program continues to engage not only at the district, but at the site level, having made, I know, over 10,000 individual calls this year. Based on the information that is included in this and the rubric, Modesto City Schools has met this priority. Priority number six relates to school climate survey. We do administer a climate survey to all of our students in grades 3 through 12. This information is used, again, in preparing the LCAP and the development of it, as well as defining priorities for the next school year that we need to look at for our students. This year, the survey in grades 3 through 12 had over 14,000 responses from our students in that information. And based, again, on the information of the rubric, we have met that priority for Modesto City Schools. Priority number seven, which is the access to a broad course of study. It requires that we have given that course of study to all students as prescribed in ed code, and then all the students have access as applicable. When you look at this, we have a lot of varieties of supports within our programs. For example, being the dual-language program, IBAP, Language Institute Extended Summer School are some of the examples of that. Based on this and what we've done for our grade levels that are required, Modesto City Schools has also met this priority. So when you look at the five specific local performance indicators that are not reported as part of the LCAP process specifically, Modesto City Schools has met the standard in all five of these areas. The next steps will be, after this meeting, that we will report this to the California dashboard as per their requirements. I will put those in in the first part of July. And I turn it back over to you, President Mastis.
All right, thank you for that report. Mr. Hurst. Do we have any comments from the public on this agenda item? All right, comments and questions from the board? We'll start with, oh, we do have one, okay.
Good evening. My name is Felipe Alvarez. As mentioned before, I'm part of the high school council at Davis. I have been participating in the meetings with Steve, so many meetings. The, the recommendation that I will request from the parent's point of view is that some of the, some of the measures that you're receiving right now could be better, or should be like a, like a committee to review. These, these measures really are part of, let's say, for example, the parents ambassador, just has been mentioned. Davis, there's no parent ambassador, has been, but he's not there. Before, it was mentioned that ELAC or DILAC. DILAC is a functional committee, but the ELACs in each of the schools, they don't even have a meetings. When we did the high school council plan, it supposed that we do receive comments or reports from committees. There's no committees at Davis. There's, there's no recommendations. Then all the regulations that the state give us are, are very clear and precise. But as I have been recommended to Steve, is that we need, parents, we actually need to be trained because there's no training. Parents, that they show up to the meetings, they're, they're there for some other reason. Then there's like, as mentioned before, many of the recommendations that are presented are by perception, more than actually like more scientific data that we do receive from, from you in order to, you know, to, to do better. It's my recommendation as a parent, and I have been following this. Even Mr. Steve mentioned whether you get the time to be here, but because LCAP is important. Last meeting that I was here, I mentioned in regards to the, to the students that they had difficulties in reading. The state, they already approved a bill and has to be implemented next year. Then my question that I, that I give to some, I already have meetings with some administrators in saying, "What are you going to be doing in relation to this bill that is necessary for students that they need assistance in reading abilities?" Then, and I see a disassociation. Is there the plan? Is there the, it has been presented in LCAP. Do they have funds? Is part of the plan? Do the, do the principals? Do the principals, are they aware? I have been asking to principals, they don't even aware of several things. That's my recommendation and my point of view from parents. We need more training. We need more involvement. And I have been even requesting that Moisto City Schools talks a lot about parents, but we're 30,000 students. Oh, may I tell you something?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for listening.
All right. Trustee Marks.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a notice something and then ask a question. I have to remember what my question is. But the, I noticed on the safety, so I really appreciated that it does the percents on this because it helps me understand better how we've done, but that the majority of the students reported feeling safe at school, 63%. So, that was really helpful, just to see the climate that's changed. And the teacher support, 78% of the students responded that their teachers believe they can do good work. I mean, those kinds of things are important to understand about our students and where we are. So, that was grades 3 through 6. It was still really high in high school as well, but I do know that our students don't feel, they're not as proud of their schools. Only 28% responded that they were proud to attend the school that they were at. So, that was disappointing because we've done so much work to change that. But then, they said 76% of the students in high school, 7th through 12th grade, reported that their teachers want students to succeed compared to only 5% who disagreed. So, that was really good, that the students know that the teachers care about them, they also feel valued. So, I, to me, that was really, that was a really good one. I think the question I had was, oh, we had low ratings on peer kindness and collaboration. So, it suggested a need to improve social-emotional learning and peer interaction strategies. So, I didn't know, do we have a plan to do that? Does that go to a committee? How do we do that?
I'm going to defer, and unfortunately, Mr. Herbst is not here to respond to that right now, but it's in his area. What they're doing is the next steps on that.
Okay, that's good, because I realize that I, of course, I know, we all voted no, or the board voted no, to take life skills out of the measurements of how our students are doing. And so, I look at these character traits, and I go, if we were just teaching these more than once a month, which it says in LCAP, we're doing it once a month, I believe it would help our students care more about one another and so, and modeling that as a staff. So, I'm hoping we can change that, but I don't know what the plan is for that. So, thank you for answering that. So, that was my only question.
Thanks. Trustee Brown.
Yes. We appreciate the effort that goes into this process. I know your job's a difficult one, and we appreciate your efforts on helping us try to stay on track. So, the survey that was mentioned, are the same questions asked year over year so that we monitor progress?
Essentially, yes. We did change the provider of the survey this year, so there's a small hiccup, but the majority of the questions were the exact same questions we had last year, so we have comparative data behind the scenes that we can look at to see how we're doing.
It would be interesting just to see, you know, where we're making progress. And so, just that number about how, how much they're recognizing that their teachers are, their appreciation for the efforts that the teachers are making on their behalf, it would be great to know how that compares with the responses we got in previous years.
I've got that information for you.
Thank you.
All right. Any others? Okay. Thank you for that report. I think you're staying up there for our next one, which is our approval of the LCAP.
Excuse me. Let me get to that. So, again, good evening, everyone. I am here now for the presentation of the 2526 Local Control and Accountability Plan and looking for approval on that plan. The LCAP is a three-year plan that describes the goals, actions, and services, as well as the expenditures to support positive student outcomes that address the state and local priorities. Again, there are eight state priorities, of which the outcome of the local indicators is also required to be presented at the board meeting in conjunction with the LCAP adoption. The LCAP is aligned to our Modesto City Schools strategic goals as it was presented at the June 9th public hearing. The LCAP was, again, developed through a collaborative process with development and involvement of a variety of educational partners. The LCAP Advisory Committee, as well as the District English Learner Advisory Committee, or DLAC, have reviewed the plan and provided input as required by law. Additionally, the plan has been reviewed by the Stanislaus County Office of Education for Compliance. Community input from the public hearing was also reviewed. The LCAP plan addresses all five of our Modesto strategic goals and has actions and services identified to help meet those goals. Some of the highlights of the plan in review are full-day TK and Kinder, social-emotional supports and services, MTSS, expanded remediation and enrichment opportunities, team teaching for algebra, increased college credit courses, support for adult education, support for English learners with a specific focus on long-term English learners, supporting professional development and leadership development for our staff, the Parent Ambassadors Program to help increase parent engagement. Technology supports are embedded throughout, maintaining our school facilities, as well as providing a safe environment, recruitment and retention with a focus on employee wellness, as well as having a fiscally and operationally sound district. The LCAP plan presented today has all the proposed expenditures related to providing these actions and services and correlates with the budget adoption that is also included for approval this evening. We are requesting that the board approve the 2526 Local Control and Accountability Plan. Just one side note to you, the 2013-14 LCAP was a total of 19 pages. The LCAP that you have tonight is 194. That'll turn it back over to you, President Mastas.
Thank you for that statistic. It's remarkable. Are there any comments or questions from the public? Comments from the public?
One second, Felipe Alvarez. Something that I know is difficult because you have a huge amount of documents, and we parents are the ones that we're dealing with every day of education over children. But something that I have been observing in your board is the timing. This district has 154 years old. That is interesting. It's more a century and a half. The situation is, maybe I try to project to you my mind in relation to demographics, the demographics in relation to the people that we're serving, that 65% of the students from K to 6, 65 are Latinos. 50% are Latinos in high school. And I know we had to, to district, you conduct to district at the same time. Then, what I'm talking is about demographics. I'm listening to your comments, and something that I see is that you talk about language to be able to understand Spanish or some other language. But when I was serving in a committee at the, in the Stanislaus County, we developed a program that is called Cultural Competency Plan. Cultural competency plan is not just translation, is to be able to serve the needs of a community, depending the area in which is. Then, what I'm talking about here is in the area administration of some other areas that they can, in which they can, you can enhance to the students because of the diversity that we have at this moment. We can be talking about specific goals, goal 1, 2, or 3, if unsatisfied or not, but I see a lot of progress. In the last two years that I have been involved in this committee, I see a lot of progress. I'm very, I'm very pleased with your work, especially with the English learners. Almost 1,000 students there were reclassified, and if you will see the data of the achievement of the reclassified, it improves tremendously. What I see in this data, what I can provide, request to you is that pay attention to this cultural competency plan. It's not a new idea, because the county already, some departments already are in progress with that. It is in regards to who you are serving. Then, listen to us as a parents, because we're the one that, we're taking care of our kids at home with your assistance, and we're here to support you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? All right. We'll start with the board. Trustee Marks.
Sorry, I wasn't here last, last time, so I have these few things. Thank you, Mr. Herbst, or, Mr. Herbst, sorry, Hurst, for getting, sorry, and I'm on jet lag still, so, for getting that information for me on the percents that I was, I wanted the percents, but it's not done that way. So, I'm going to make a general comment. I do believe this is way too cumbersome. If I'm a parent and I want to know how the district's doing, this is ridiculous. I mean, I have to wade through 140 pages, or whatever, however many pages it is, and then try to understand it. So, when I evaluated other districts to give them awards with CSBA, I got to view a whole bunch of LCAPs, which was fascinating to me to see, oh, wow, you don't have to do it like this. So, theirs were smaller. Some of them had only like 20 pages, which we started with 14. They were able to, of course, their boxes were pretty small, but they had their goals on the side, and then they had the percent of students. So, to me, as a board member, I want to see our students making progress. I want to see how we're funding that in LCAP. Like, if I want to see K through 3 increasing in their reading and math levels by 3% every year, then I want to see that. I'm only at 25% this year. Well, I want to be at 28% next year. I want to be at 30%, 31% the next year. So, as a board, how do we change this?
Unfortunately, the template that you have is required by the state and is controlled by the State Board of Education and is updated every single year, and they've continued to add items to the template.
So, I'm trying to figure out how those other districts did it, because theirs are in these little skinny little boxes, and they have the question, and then they have their little chart, they had a chart in it. So, maybe they took this information and put it in a different format, which is possible.
That could be possible, but the format you have is what's required by the state to be used.
And I know, I remember being on the committee when we were trying to figure this out from the state level and asking, how can we make this parent-friendly? And I don't think it is. So, I'll have to take that up with the state, I guess. So, thank you.
All right. Any other comments from the board? Okay. So, I'm looking for a motion to approve the Local Control and Accountability Plan. I see a motion by Trustee Irvin. I hear a second from Vice President Mejia. All those in favor to approve the LCAP, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Can we have a reason for the nay?
Absolutely. I no longer trust the district or the way that they're spending the money, and so I'm going to listen to the public and vote nay.
Okay. So, motion passes 6 to 1, with the one nay being Trustee Daley. That'll move us to our D5, which is the budget approval of the certification of 2526 budget. Mrs. Hurley.
Thank you, President Mastas. Good evening, trustees. There is no formal budget presentation tonight, as the budget public hearing was held on June 9th, two weeks ago, with a very detailed PowerPoint presentation regarding our proposed, our proposed budget for 2526. The only change tonight in your packet includes the supporting schedules as required to be submitted with our budget, much like what you just heard from Mr. Hurst. We have the same templates that we have to follow in what we, what we present as part of our budget. Ours is only about 150 pages, a little smaller than his, but all of our required schedules are now part of tonight's, a part of tonight's approval process. Our projected budget and multi-year projections support that our district is projecting to be able to meet its financial obligations for the current and subsequent two years. We are proudly recommending approval of certification of the 2526 budget for all funds and authorization to transmit copies to both local and state agencies.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Hurley. Are there any comments from the public? Thank you for sticking around.
I will get your own words. Do you have to make these reports parents-friendly? Parents-friendly? I mean, basically, how we can elaborate on a precise question or an intelligent question if we don't understand that data the way it's presented? How are you expecting my information if you do not provide me information in a proper way? We're not talking, we're not talking with the whole board and also with your administrators. I need to have meetings personally with each of them. I had questions with the, just for an example, with my State School Council Plan, I had a question, the director, the principal cannot give me a question. Then, I had to bring Steve, I had to use him, I'm sorry, Steve, had to use Steve and sit down with Steve and the principal in order to gain questions, to get those questions answered. I think that's unfair, because the money belonged to our students. Then, if they give us tight on one, 500,000, close to 500,000, to provide more services, ways to increase the knowledge of our students, we have to say how we want that money to be spent. Then, that's our responsibility, that's why I'm sitting there, and that's why I'm asking questions. I called him to the meetings, he has been very nice to show up, but that's not the way, we're not communicating, we're not communicating. Right now, this is the second-largest employer in the county, second, and we have hundreds of millions of dollars. That's why I'm calling you, to all of you, to think in a different way, because we have more, close to more to 150 years, the demographics has changed. You guys have to serve us, because we are your committee to serve. Then, let us help us, but you help us and give us the proper information. I mentioned in this committee, when I have been in this LCAP, that we answer the questions by perception. By perception, that's not right. We shouldn't be answering those questions by perception. Last week, and once again, I present that is a need for reading. We had to identify the kids that they have reading disabilities at early stages. The state of California finally recognized that, gives to the district's direction. Then, the person who handles the money, the person who handles the programs, the administrators, they had to come out with the program. And we, parents, we had to see that it actually is working, but give us the information in a proper manner. Let us work with you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for sticking around.
Okay. So, hi, my name's Celia, again. I wanted to speak in regards to, okay, so I was able to listen to the comprehensive detail that was going on for our last meeting for some funding issues, and so I did have a question in regards to, as I mentioned earlier in public comment, which I was not supposed to, about the AB 218. And I'm just curious why it is $791,000 that we're going to be paying for one year? Is there allegations that are against our school, Modesto City School District as it is? Is it because we are such a large district? I'm just not understanding, like, this is going to be a daily thing, and I do understand that none of you guys are saying, hey, we got to do this insurance, like, this is ordered by the state of California, right? And so, I think, like, being able to present this to us in more than just, this is a $791,000 expenditure that is being put on a slide, and giving us a detailed reason on why it is so expensive would be really helpful. I did also notice in regards to the budget that 70, I believe it was 76% of special education funds are going to be coming from a general fund. And what is that going to look like if funding is going to be revoked with current orders that are coming from presidencies to the state of California? Are we going to be wasting money? And are we going to be losing money on special education programs? Which holds yours to my heart because I do have a student in special education. As well as I had, my student was in special education and did not get qualified with Modesto City Schools. As I mentioned earlier, I am an employee in two capacities for Modesto City Schools. But I am very grateful that my student is not in the school district because you guys felt he didn't qualify when in fact he did when he returned to his homeschool district. So, and that being said, are we really looking at the students? Like, yes, I hear we're looking at the students. And I've heard tonight, a lot of you say that this is about the students. And I do see how every student matters. I see how that's important. That's why I like working here, also because of you guys taking care of your employees, right? This is one of the high-paying districts, right? But are we looking at the students when it comes to the familiar settings? And saying, my student has these things going on for special education, but I'm being told that, oh, it's maladapted behavior. So at the end of the day, are we looking at the students? At the end of the day, I hope that you can bring an answer to us on why we're paying $790,000, a little bit, but more than that, to us parents and the community. And what are we going to do if we lose federal funding? Thank you.
Thank you. Could probably get some of those answers for her at some point. Do we have any questions or comments from the board? Trustee Marx?
I had two questions. We're deficit spending 16.4 million dollars a year, is that correct? I saw it on unrestricted general fund summary. That's projects the total operating deficit. Maybe it's a deficit, are we deficit spending it?
We are deficit spending.
Okay.
Projected for budget year and the two subsequent years.
Okay, so when we do the unassigned balance with the combined balance, it shows in 27, 28 that we will only have $4 million in that.
That is unassigned, correct. We still maintain the 6% reserve, which is 3% more than district our side is required.
Okay, so that's the lowest number I think I've ever seen on our districts for the 27 years I've been here. So I know that's disconcerting, but I know we're going to have to make some adjustments. And that means make some cuts, I believe, for the next couple of years, just to make, make sure. Because we have COLA and we have all that, that adds into that. So, okay, that was a comment. I do have a question. I just, I don't know if it can be brief or not, but is it easy to answer the AB 218 about the $791,000? Because I wasn't here last board meeting. Is it easy to answer that for the why, is it for the lawsuits?
Yeah, I mean, we, we went into that in, in detail. It had its own slide for a reason in the public hearing because it is, it is an amount that we have not seen at, at this level yet. It has nothing to do, as I mentioned two weeks ago, it has nothing to do with claims against us.
Right.
Right now. And prior to 2018, we were part of, we were part of the School Excess Liability Fund. Currently, we're with, at 2018, we went Keenan or NorCal Relief. So prior to, it's the, any claim that may come about prior to 2018, we are, we're part of other districts across the state of California. It's what's called a JPA, a Joint Powers Authority. And so as a member of that JPA, we own all of the liability for that JPA. The JPA has to remain whole. And so what they do is they, they, they have what's called an assessment. This is our assessment three for our district. It is based on the size of your district. So what they're doing is they look at, there is a evaluation done from the JPA that looks at what's the current liabilities and what could be in the future. They, they give us an assessment to their member districts, although we're no longer a member. We still own those, those potential liabilities, and so that's what that is for. And this is, we haven't seen an assessment this size. This is assessment three, as I mentioned. There's no guarantee that assessment four will be the same amount. We just have to wait until we see that from the JPA annually.
So it's almost like a reserve just in case.
Yes.
That's how I'm looking at it.
In order to keep, in order to keep the trust solvent.
Right, that makes sense. So thank you for taking the time to share that with me tonight. I appreciate it. I was trying to get through that whole five hours of board meeting and I think I missed that part. So I apologize for that.
Well, it's new, we haven't, I, as I, as I, as I mentioned two weeks ago, we've never had to present that during our, our budget proposal.
Well, thank you, yeah. It is unfortunate, but I understand it's because of state law.
Thanks, trustee Daley.
If I'm remembering correctly from the last meeting, we get approximately $10,000 a year for students TK six, is that correct?
That's probably low, but, but yeah, it's, it's in the 10 to 12,000 dollar range.
I'm, I'm choosing the lower side and kind of an easy because math is not my forte. So I will be voting no on this. I'm letting everybody know now beforehand because we spent $30,000 on a curriculum that on the bottom end, if a thousand, if 100 students drop out, and I'm doing my math correctly, we will lose a million dollars a year. If 1,000 students are pulled to homeschool, we will lose $10 million a year. So I will be voting no on the budget.
All right. Any other comments from the board? Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve certification of the 2526 budget for all funds and authorization to transmit copies to local and state agencies? Okay, motion from Vice President Mejia, second from trustee Irvin? Okay? All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Okay, any opposed? All right, motion passes six to one with the one nay being trustee Daley. All right, so are there any items to be placed on future board agendas? All right, do you hear a motion to adjourn? Moved by Vice President Mejia, second by trustee Marx. All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? No? Passes unanimously.